Sorry that everyone's still munching, but. I'm gonna go ahead and get working on the proposed budget. Michael, is there anything you want to start with?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So Mayor Protem and Suzanne and I talked earlier today on how we might best organize this workshop. And my hope for this evening, obviously, council can do as it wishes. But because it is two hours of time and because the budget is a fairly lengthy document, my suggestion is to go council member by council member if there are questions, if there are suggestive revisions, we go by council member rather than page by page because that does take quite a bit of time. Obviously, if y'all want to do that, we can do that. That's the suggestion. If there are changes, obviously, I would imagine it's a consensus of four of you to do that. We have a couple easels back here to keep track of everything and give you a visual. This is something I brought with me from Aurora. It's not novel or very creative, but it is effective. And so we, this way, we can, if something's added, let's make sure that we balance it out as best we can, sort of thing. Suzanne and I will keep track of all that. So is that, does that work?
Yeah, so I was thinking, I know that we ended on questions with Rusty and Robert, so I thought we could just start that direction. And if each council member wouldn't mind either recapping their questions and bringing their answers that they've received, or if they didn't receive their answer clear, or if they need clarification to let Michael know. So, because I know that we got some answers. And so if you want to share those answers with the public, that would be great. And if you have further questions, and then just be mindful of everyone's time, so.
And one other thing I might mention here, I don't have handouts for y'all on this, but since October 15th, when we issued you the proposed budget, we've been going through it, and there's a few other things, as I mentioned last time, that need to be corrected and changed. And so just verbally, I wanted to go through those with you. Most of them were in the general fund and they actually worked out in our favor. So that's something to keep in mind if there are things you wanted to add to the budget. We did, in the culture, started with the Culture and Rec Fund now. We had $10,000, $10,200 in overtime that didn't need to be in there, so we pulled that out. There was a capital project in the Police Department for an HVAC system that did not get taken out. So that was repeated again as a capital project in '22. So that's $60,000 that we pulled out of the budget. Another $40,000 we pulled out in subsidy from the general fund to the cultural fund. We don't need that, so that's another $40,000 to the good for the general fund. Councilmember Nakai had asked a question, well, do we, have you liked electricity and natural gas costs? And we have, but I don't think it made it in there. Natural gas, we haven't seen any reason to suggest it go up. Electricity, however, there's a, we have a one-time rider from Core Energy that we expect to add about $14,000 to our electric bill for '22. So we did add some money, $14,000 to the budget for that. Then we just made a small adjustment to our taper balance, $9,200. We also have updated projections for 2021. I think I'm saying this right, oh, excuse me, 2020, after finally completing the audit. And so our fund balance actually went up in the general fund by $158,000. And then, I think that's it, actually. So you don't need to memorize all that, but there, in the general fund. Oh, good. There'll be a quiz later, but you don't need to memorize. But for the general fund, that, that gives you about $88,000 to work with, just creating space, so. But if council does wish to add things to the budget, we can talk through how best to do that, as soon as consensus on adding that, right? So if you do this, we can do other things, but we can talk about it. So, do we have Rob, or Rob, Rob, do we have Aaron?
Yes.
We do have Rob Fisher. Okay.
Hey, Aaron.
Hello.
So do you want to go ahead and start with Rusty?
Sure. And I got a heads up, Robert, they're starting with myself and yourself because we have a tendency to ask a lot more questions. Stephanie, you'll probably be third in line, so that we don't run out of time. I've got a lot of questions, so if I miss some of yours, I'll try to go as fast so everybody gets time to go back. What I'm planning to do is start with the big questions we asked, and I'll probably do a little tag team going through the document. Starting with the first question that I had asked was to consider finding ways to enhance compensation for frontline employees to better allow them to afford to live in Woodland Park, consider adding a performance-based or merit-based compensation for employees. We were all provided a separate package of information from Michael, and I appreciate that. I had met with him prior to getting that and had actually gone through every position that I had asked to see. And I will tell the citizens that I was a little bit surprised in a different direction. I was expecting to see salaries leaning towards the higher end, or at least above the midpoint. And what I saw was very few people even close to the midpoint. There are a few that are above, quite a few are below. I'm not going to go into any details, other than saying, I am very comfortable with your 3% from the, for the 2021 and the 3% for this that was requested. In fact, I scratched my head looking at the numbers. I'm not going to put this out on the table, but I was actually thinking, why aren't we bumping it up 4.5% to get closer to what the national average? But I think, considering where we live, in Woodland Park, the 3%, bringing them up closer to the midpoint, we're a little bit further, there are a lot of them are right there by the bottom. But it does bring them a little bit further away from the bottom with the 3%. You've looked at the budget, I'm sure you've discussed it with your department heads, what would keep the citizens happy? I'm comfortable with the 3% bump. So let me pause there, so we can have discussion, maybe? Is that how you'd like to do it?
Sure. So the exercise was helpful.
It was very helpful. Eye-opening on, we tend to be a little lower. Stephanie, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that. I know I was watching your body language, you may have some thoughts.
I've always been comfortable with the 3% for this last year and this coming year. I have no issues with it whatsoever.
Sorry, I misread the body language. Robert, you okay?
Silence is acceptance. Here, take another bite.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with a 3% escalator for cost of living at all. But as I looked at the compensation market study of $115,000, which includes a market study and some sort of compensation adjustments on it, my thought is, as building a little on what Rusty said last, the last meeting, is that I think that a way that we increase creativity and performance with the staff is to look at things like, for example, if you're in your position, you save the city X amount of dollars as a one-time savings, that should be acknowledged and rewarded. And a percentage of that, figure out what that is, I don't know. If you save the city an ongoing amount of money, let's say you save the city $50,000 a year, and it's measurable, it can happen every year, then I think it's a reasonable incentive to offer that employee who excels in that regard and saves the city money, therefore, it improves our bottom line, offer an ongoing increase from that or bonus, if you like. But it would be if they're saving it as an annual cost, it would get, they would get remunerated for that for as long as they're with the city. The third one would be, well, if it's non-tangible value incentives, such as maybe efficiencies in their department, their attitude, which creates greater goodwill amongst the staff around them, or, or team efficiencies, I think that should also be a way of measuring of how to look at this, this improvement. It troubles me that we had a 30, what'd you say, 34%, 37% attrition rate in staff. Some of it I understand without going into detail, but some of it is, yeah, we are, we are losing some of our employees to competition. So if you have an in-house way of motivating staff in a way that saves the city money, and therefore can go to their bottom line as far as an employee, I would be very open to creating a budget number that could be defined with those types of examples of metrics. I think that's all on, one other thing. And I guess my other question was, given the chart you gave us this week, what's the justification of spending another 15 grand for a market study on, on salaries? Well, we have, we have, you've given, you've provided us with the worksheets on, on market studies averages, whatever. Why would we be wanting to spend another $15,000 on that? Why wouldn't we just be applying that funds into the sort of incentive program? I, I'm not saying that's absolute what I'm saying, but what I'm suggesting. Why spend an extra $15,000?
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You have multiple answers. Okay, go ahead. I'm going to keep having my members first.
Well, two things I'd like to comment, Councilmember Zuluwaga. I don't know if you were on council when Mayor Carr introduced the incentive program to employees. He was, that was one of his ideas two years ago in the budget. He, he wanted to start a program similar to that. A pot of money that if an employee saved the city money, that it would be distributed. So it's nice to hear that revisited. The second thing is the market study, and I would have Amy's here with us as HR too, to help with these kind of questions, is to make sure these ranges are correct. To make sure that a planning director is getting, you know, a grade 15, that that range is what the market is having right now for 2022. Is that how you would answer it, Amy?
I would, as part of a compensation strategy, we did a major compensation study started in 2018, where we did reviews of job descriptions, were they accurate? Looking at, were they in the correct grade? Were we at market pricing? So as part of that study, about every two or three years, you should just revisit and make sure there haven't been any dramatic changes. So as part of our overall compensation structure, every few years, we should be relooking at the market values. So we aren't doing the huge research again. It's just, are we in line with market for 2022?
And that's, that's what it costs you.
Yes. Just, it's just under our quote, is just under 12,000 right now.
And we stopped that quote.
Correct.
So I have a quick question then, where did the numbers that we've been presented come from?
With this, it was from our study done in 2018, which finished up in 2019.
Okay.
Those are where they're coming from.
The only thing I would say, Robert, is I strongly agree with your recommendations. When I spoke to you, Michael, I said I'd like to see some sort of incentive. I didn't give any guidance or thoughts about how to do it. I left it up to you. What you actually mentioned, that's the way the military, the Army, does have a program identical to your first and second suggestions, where if a soldier saves the military, you know, some amount of money, they get a piece of it. So however you want to structure the $100,000, if there's a consensus on what you've proposed or what's in vows, I would, I would be a part of that consensus opinion on how to do it.
So a couple of thoughts that I made. My previous organization, we had a program like that rewarding innovation. But I also, it sounds like I'm also hearing there's one for innovation. If you create efficiencies, business process improvement, there's perhaps a cut for you. I like those because a lot of times you find those in the field applications, and it reaches those folks on the front line, so those are, those are cool programs. Customers, I also hear, in my mind, customer service, I hear attitude. That's something that Amy and Suzanne and I have bounced around and Rob as well for some time. Rob, having a military background, not to speak for him, but he's, he's all about, and is familiar with those programs as well. Yeah. So that's something we could absolutely do. I, my question for, for the two of you is I'm hearing two different things. So I hear Councilman Neal saying, part of that $100,000, use that towards rewards. Or is it for Councilmember Zuluwaga saying, we may put a program together and come back, and we might consider an additional preparation.
Well, for a working number right now, you can work with that, that money that's in there. But I'm not opposed to it, because when you look at the numbers and you look at, it's pretty clear. You know, if somebody spends the time in their job and they think it through and they bring a suggestion, I mean, every workplace has suggestion boxes. Well, I think the suggestion boxes should be something that is measurable and rewardable. And, and you know, when you have 37% return attrition rate in your staff, that goes back to job satisfaction or job attitude. It's, we don't all just change jobs because of money. It's also about workplace environment. So if we can, if we can create a employee retention concept that really, you know, makes people excited to come to work, because there is some greater reward than just showing up and leaning on the shovel, I'm just talking about, you know, the typical perceptive perception. I think it could be a win-win for all of us.
I think, I think we might even have a natural progression in that direction with regards to environment, because I think our environment has made a big change, particularly with the leadership. And I think that that with time will continue to improve that morale in the whole piece that you're speaking to.
Yeah, that's caught or captured in your item C idea for those type of jobs that are not like engineers, where it's real easy to find the cost savings, but it gives them a way to get a little bit of a bonus too, so that's a great idea.
I think Michael just creates a whole attitude approach that's much more pleasant and calm and comfortable. How'd I do?
Councilmembers Zuluwaga, what I think that we need clarity on is, if we do the market survey, we do need to have a pool of money if we want to make those adjustments. So are we able to keep that $100,000 for the market adjustments and then have an additional pool for these incentives? Or do you see it coming out of the $100,000? I think that's what the question is.
Just, want to answer something? Oh, well, I just want to say that, just like, we don't appropriate something towards a project until it's laid out. I think that we don't know what the study is, and it should come back as a special appropriations at a later date. Should be the way that that goes. So I think that, you know, you might like to put in, put in your $12,000 for your study, put in an amount for incentive, employee incentive as a separate line item. And then if you come back as an appropriation on a later date, that would be another whole way to present that, I think.
I, I think we can do that. It's, it will take us a little bit of time to put together a whole system. It's all things we, all of us have seen before in other places, and we can replicate that maybe fairly easily. But we'll take time. We, just with the natural timing of things, I think we can probably shave a little bit of $100,000 off. We'll see. If we, if we come back to the market research and be like, oh my gosh, we got to spend every dollar of this right now, then conceivably, we could come back and be like, yeah, remember that great idea you had? We'd like to employ compensation, employee retention and rewarding. We could use a little more help.
Just keep in mind, there's an election. And by the time that comes around, we may not be sitting here. So if you really want to make, see that happen with this budget cycle, maybe putting, reserving, putting some money in to implement the market study might be wise. Just thinking ahead.
Well, I guess what I wanted to do is address, I was thinking actually the $100,000 was going to be a part of the, the incentive program that Robert was talking about. I now understand that that's, once we spend the $15,000 to see how the brackets shift, we may need to bring. I did see there are some employees that are sitting at the exact bottom dollar number. So if there was a shift up, they would, they would be the ones that would instantly be targeted for a compensation adjustment. But I don't think you'll, you'll consume the entire $100,000 to do that. So what would happen with the remainder of that? Still used to spread out to those that are at the lower end?
You have to still not just bring the bottom up to the bottom of the new range. You have to create that internal equity with everyone else in there. You can't just move the bottom, because then you're encroaching on people, someone that may have been hired five months ago, that's brought up to the bottom. Now, he's making the same as someone's been here three years. That internal equity component still has to be evaluated as well to keep that natural spread, if you will, that shows experience and time.
Yeah, and I've seen that at both ends, both the government, wherever, everybody's paid the same in a salary range, and I've seen it at the Capitol, where when you come in and negotiate your salary, if you're a bad negotiator and you walk out making $20,000 less than the guy next to you, even though they got the same time, in grade, same skills, that's, that's the way the capital market works and you live with it. And people don't share salaries in the, in the commercial world like they do in the, in the government world. So we're saying that that $100,000 is not just to get it to the, to the minimum level that might have some residual. Is that what, I'm, I'm looking for, is that what everybody agrees to?
That's how that implementation happens.
No, I have a different idea about it. And that is, we have a 37% attrition rate. So let's look at those positions, let's look at what the market, what the market study is of those salaries. Let's look at, of those, was the moving on of their own volition? Was it because of the pay? Was it of, I mean, unsatisfactory work performance? And once you evaluate the 37% of our staff who we've lost and we're looking to replace, that's where we should start. We want to make sure that we're not, that we're not missing something there. The rest of the staff, I really think that we should be looking at incentive programs, because I'm not a socialist, I have no interest in equity for everybody. We have equal opportunity, we don't all perform without opportunity the same.
Oh, absolutely.
So for, so for, no, I'm, I'm just giving my perspective on this, so. So I'm not for, oh yeah, okay, you know, you do, you just show up to work and you automatically get an escalator. I'm not, I'm not for that. I really think it needs to be tied to how you're contributing to the, to the city teams. What's it, to performance and be measurable and be, and be fair, so. Yeah, so that's, that's all.
And know that that's not what I'm talking.
I, I didn't know you were, it's just, I just had it, that's how to say it my way.
And remember, remember, you have to be careful of discriminatory implementations. And so I hear a lot of discrimination in what you're describing.
Really, how, how are you seeing?
You can't just pick and choose. You have to look at the structure. And then the, the pay for performance is a different piece. But you can't discriminate just because 34% is, is where the attrition is happening. You can't just address the 34%. Of course you have to look at the whole structure. No, you can't. Amy?
So when looking at compensation, we do take into account, especially with the Equal Pay for Equal Work Act that was instituted January 1st of this year through the state. If we have discrepancies in pay within any Title VII protected classes, there has to be a justification. Because what has happened in the marketplace over time is that there has been discrimination, one of them based on gender. So if we have a female in the same position, let's say it's a perfect world, okay? I'll give you the perfect world example. We have a female who is in the same position as a male, they've been with the city exact same amount of time. They have the same certifications, everything is identical, and she is paid less? We have a problem. She might not be part of that attrition rate. So yes, we do have to take into account, and we do have a structure built to make sure that we are looking to see if there are any, if there's any discrimination within our pay, because that is something that has happened. So we are very aware of that. So we can't just say because of attrition that we're going to pay these people differently. There are several different factors that we need to look at. So for me, Councilmember Zuluwaga, I think that's one of them that we could look at. What are those positions? Why are they leaving? And then incorporate that into our full structure for compensation, is what I would prefer to do, if you're okay with that.
Well, I'm uncomfortable now, because what you've just described is how the military, every job, regardless of male, female, if you've been in X number of years, you are paid identical. But then you don't need a range. Our whole salary structure is based on a range. Some people are down here, so I'm uncomfortable with the words you just gave, because it, it sounds like, okay, we're just going to go in and give everybody, we've got to figure out what the lowest common denominator is, and then everybody comes, or no, the highest common denominator, and everybody gets up to it. What if we got, I mean, there are a couple people, they're way up at the, the end. Now, they're not above the max, but they're at the top. Does that mean we're going to compensate them down? How are you going to do, I mean, what's your proposal?
Absolutely. So I understand, and I apologize if I misspoke. So we have people who, which you're talking about in that, that have been here 37 years.
Correct.
And you're right, they're at the top of their range. That's something, under the Equal Pay Act, I can justify why they're so high within their range. That's okay. So we still do have a range, because we have people with different certifications, different classes, different, I mean, like training classes is what I mean when I say that. So we do have that variety within our ranges. We have different positions within those ranges. So no, our structure is not to make sure everyone is equal, but that it is fair. If that makes sense.
But you're, what you described does not have a single performance component to it. Right. And that's what Robert, and I agree with Robert. That's what I agree, should have a performance component.
So part of that performance component in, and Suzanne and Michael, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, please feel free to jump in. Part of our compensation is performance based on what education have they, what classes have they taken? What certifications do they have? What have they done to improve their job performance? Have they taken on extra tasks? So we do have that in there. The example I was giving is if we have two people who are identical, which I can tell you, we don't. But if we had two people who were identical with same certification, same years in service, same degrees, same position, then they should be paid the same. So based on performance, they took on extra duties. I mean, they are identical in every way. But we don't have that. I was just giving it as an example. So we have people who have different certifications, have taken different classes, have taken on new job responsibilities. And so they are moved up in their range for those reasons. They are a high performer. Yes, those are part of our compensation structure.
So there's still, there's still room for discretion within how employees are. So there's still, there's still room for discretion within how employees are compensated.
Yes.
What I, what I think Amy is saying is that there, if there's discrimination and it's baseless for, like, I, I like Joe better than Sue, that, that can't. Sue.
That's why I.
Susan, right. I like Joseph better than Susan. That's, that's not okay. But as, as Amy said, there's still, there, if there's a justification for it, and it's not a question of a title, an explicit Title VII violation, then that we can still do that. And you can still reward for high performance. Might be, what I'm hearing is it might be easier to do that with one-time pays, perhaps in base building, but there's, there's still a great deal of latitude in that.
Correct. We just have to make sure with the new legislation that was passed that we are following all of the guidelines set by the Equal Pay for Equal, Equal Pay for Equal Work Act. So that's where our structure comes in, is making sure we're compliant with the new law.
So going back to where this conversation started on the attrition and Councilmember Zuluwaga's comments on looking specifically at the places where we have the highest amount of attrition. What I hear you saying is, you know, say for instance, we find that IT is something that is constantly turning over and we determine that apparently we're not at the market rate for those types of jobs. Just because we increased the pay in that type of job doesn't mean we have to go back and adjust the entire staff salary when we're looking at that specific area where we're seeing a high rate of attrition. It, it, it doesn't go across the board that we have to apply those increases to the entire staff.
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I understood that.
Can you understand that? And the, and the other question I have for you, Amy, is how do you address somebody who's overqualified, somebody who wants to come to work here, but is overqualified and you do all this equal pay for equal whatever, or well, they've got all these degrees or all these trainings, but the job doesn't, the job scope of that job does not justify paying the person for everything they're qualified for. If they still want to work here, are you now violating the fact that they've been to school?
No, we aren't because we also look at their job description. So if their job description doesn't require a master's degree, but they have one, that's not necessary for their job. So we have to just look at what is the job description and what is required for that job description.
And? Yeah, what's the rest of the sentence? So you have somebody who has a master's degree, the job doesn't require that. When you make a job offer to that person, what's the conversation or how does that kind of?
You bet. So the conversation is, here's the job you have applied for. Here is the pay, which, starting pay, most of the time is right near that minimum. And they can choose to accept that or not, but that is the pay for the position. Does that, does that answer it?
Yeah, and so there's no inequity then. You're not running into some violation of the law because they have a higher certification than the job requires.
Correct.
And then how do you escalate them up past the base pay? How's that, what's that metrics? And I guess that's really what I'm talking about. The whole thing is like, yeah.
So Kip, Kip probably more than anybody else encounters us in this world every day.
Sorry, I've been waiting to talk for a little while. So this is what happens here. And this is how employees get mad. So typically, we're lucky to get a cost of living adjustment. On certain years, there'll be a little bit on, on top of that for performance. But when I say a little bit, let's just say, for example, this year, three percent COLA. You know, if it was an average three percent a year, just hypothetically speaking, every so often we would get another percent or a percent and a half for the performance side of things. So you do the evaluation. Everything goes through, you get a COLA and then a little bit for performance. Okay? We barely get performance. We're usually COLA, or if that. So when we do the market study, those folks who have been here a while have gotten a COLA for a couple of years. They're coming off the bottom a little bit because they're COLA, but we do a market study. Oh, look, you're back at the bottom. The guy that we just hired yesterday is making the same as you and you've been here five years. They just get upset. Whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, they're just upset because they're the same. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if they're good or bad. It's just the way it is. So there's never any more than COLA. So you don't really get off the bottom unless something changes, your duties change, something like that where it's additional responsibility, then you get off the bottom. So for example, we had, we had a mechanic here who had been here for twelve years. We had a new mechanic been here three. He caught him that fast. Because he had been here when the times were good, where it was, it was, we were paid for performance. And then for a couple of years, we weren't. And when you do those market studies, the ranges go up, you're at the bottom again, and they just get mad. And they leave. I had, another, another case in point is we don't have policies in place to where you're, you're, you're given a certain increase after making probation. So we have an employee resign Friday. He's going to make ten thousand dollars more. Granted, it's Colorado Springs Utilities. But after, after probation is done, he gets a six percent increase, just like, just for completing probation. Get him off the bottom, basically. So they don't have that issue. We don't have those types of things. We've tried to, we've looked at work progression plans. We've done all types of things, but it's just, we never get off the bottom because there isn't, like, this year, three percent COLA, yep, we're going to stay at the bottom because the new market study is going to come out and it's going to have that inflation factor in there, but there's no pay for performance. So that's just how it works.
Can?
Yeah, you never get it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Colorado Springs Utilities is private, not public, correct? It's. But it's not part of Colorado Springs Government.
I mean, it. Yeah, their, their council, their utility board is the same as their city council.
Okay.
And I just use that as an example. It can happen even in the, in the private sector. It all depends on whatever policies they have in place.
Well, for instance, we had our city attorney leave. We could use him as an example.
Well, if I, if I could, because we're forty-two minutes into the session on the first question. If I could try to summarize what I've heard, that, that we're, we're saying the three percent and three percent COLA is acceptable, the hundred thousand dollars that we put there is to, you have the fifteen thousand dollar market survey adjustment, and then with the residual eighty-five thousand, you take that, anybody brings it back up, and then you're going to analyze some of the thoughts that were offered to, to you for performance-based, and you'll come back in a request for a supplemental. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I have no issue with that. If, if council would like to do that, again, because this is a zero-cost thing right now. I don't know if we need consensus. This, this was a priority of mine anyway. It'd be nice to hear for you, that's a good idea. We, we can come back at some point after we get the market study and we can get an understanding. Because we're, we're going to need that amount of time to set up a, a recognition program anyway.
Can I just suggest that maybe, I, I agree with everything you guys are saying, so I don't disagree with it. After hearing Kip speak, that perhaps instead of an incentive base, that it may be as a probationary period base. Because that would be easier for the organization to implement. Like after you pass your probationary period of six months, you get some type of raise and they can determine financially, you know? And then bring that back to us, what would be best. And maybe it is.
Well, I would see that as a part of the, that hundred thousand dollars where you're making adjustments. Because you're, you're hiring new people and you put them in a probationary peep, and then you could give them adjustment. But I'm talking about a performance-based idea separate that we don't have any money allocated for. We've thrown out some ideas. It, it sounds like a lot of people are in favor of, but we would need you to put some structure around it and then come back with a supplemental request so that we could kind of, everybody nod, that's the direction to give the staff, so we can go on to question two.
Real quick, before we go on to question two. Just before we go on to question two, I wanted to say on behalf of the staff, thank you for approving the three percent COLA for two thousand twenty-one and the three percent COLA for two thousand twenty-two. It is much appreciated. So thank you for that, all of you.
And I hope the citizens followed the discussion. It's a fair thing when we see six percent. We have all looked at it. It's, it's a fair adjustment. Robert, your number two question, I'm going to let you take number two and three, before it comes back to me. If you're satisfied, we can move on.
Okay. So I had asked staff to create an amortization schedule on the alternative payoff schedule for the aquatic center debt, assuming differing amounts of prepayments and interest rates. Did everybody receive one of these from staff? Yeah, you thought about that. So thank you very much for doing that. As I was pondering this and pondering Kelly's comment last council where she said, well, no further council is required to, has any commitment to putting these funds aside. I had a thought. And that is this. We can't do any prepayment till twenty twenty-five. But gee whiz, we have a park which we could just about pay that debt off with what we were planning to put aside for the aquatic center. And we would save almost a million dollars of interest. Is there any appetite on council to shift putting that money aside, which we have no control over, past our tenure? And saying, okay, let's pay off the park. It's two point, let's see if I can. Two point two four two five. Can we do, and I don't know whether we can, Michael, whether we can.
Going to look into that.
Yeah. Well, it's.
I don't, I'm going to have to look into that more.
In your, in your manuals here, it's on page one hundred and forty-eight, if you want to look at it. And it looks to me as like calculated up the totals. It's not going to get paid off until twenty thirty-four. It's two point five eight oh, from what I see. And about nine, nine, nine hundred and six thousand four hundred dollars in interest. With the amount of money that we're looking to put aside, even what we've got right now, the one point six, whatever it is, plus whatever the five hundred thousand or is for next year, that's going to drop a lot of interest payment we're not going to have to pay. And we can get the jump on the, on the aquatic center when we can really do it and we'll, and we'll be able to have funds set aside for that. So it's just a thought. And instead of putting money in the bank or putting it in a reserve, we're getting, you know, point zero zero, whatever interest rate on, we actually do something that saves us, you know, a bunch of money. So.
You must see a piece of a call date or do we not?
Looking into it. I think if, if we can do that, I have no problem with it.
I don't mean very much in favor of that.
Yeah, mathematically, if that makes sense, I'm in favor. But the only thing that came to my mind was the discussion, and I guess this goes back to Noel Sawyer, where we were talking about, the reason why we were building that up is we would have leverage to go back and renegotiate the interest rates on the pool debt.
We have to refinance.
Or refinance it, but we could then negotiate because we're putting more in. Is those that are financially savvy here, you, you've looked at the numbers of the interest that we would save, would the leverage to get better interest rates be greater than the savings? Yeah.
There's a cost of issuance involved as well.
So this would be the smarter way to go. What Robert suggested.
I haven't put pen to paper. I'll defer to Aaron. He's the finance director now, but just be aware that refinancing debt, general obligation bonds, comes at a cost of bond counsel, all kinds of expenses.
So, and so if I made this, this is an excellent question. We will look into it no matter what. I don't know if it really impacts the twenty-two budget in terms of the amount of money, but it's just, if, if we want to pull it out of the fund balance and pay down the, the part debt, if that makes sense, hey, let's do it. And that'll be a separate conversation with you all outside of the budget. But I think that's a, I think that's a great conversation to have. You got that, Aaron?
Lost my mouse there. Uh, yes, we'll definitely look into that. Sounds excellent.
Processing.
All right, so we can move past that one first, unless somebody else wants to comment on it.
Well, and it also will, will depend on what interest rates are, where interest rates are for a refinance and whether that it's enough, enough basis points to capture savings. And with the consideration of the cost of issuance involved. So it's, it's just, you have to look at the net sum gain.
Right.
And whether or not it's worth it wherever interest rates fall at that time. And I'm sure our credit is excellent.
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but, all right, so good. That's all I have to say on that one. Number three says, what is the cost of the banging the table on ongoing software commitments and community engagement functions? Break out the eighteen, three thirty-eight. So that's been broken out here for us. So thank you very much.
May I jump in for?
Please.
Muni Revs, is that within civic clerk here?
No, Muni Revs is different.
Muni Revs is a separate, separate cost center. I would imagine some finance.
It's finance. It's used for business license and sales tax and logic.
I understand the meaning of revs. I was wondering what the cost was.
Cost for many reps?
Because the only software cost that I saw under the finance department was this eighteen thirty-eight. There we go. Paid forty-five. We have financial software. Well, that's in twenty twenty though.
A few of the licenses are under eighteen.
Oh, oh, I'll see if I can find an answer for that here. We'll come back to it.
Okay. And that actually, I'll just touch on, I see that we have a a bunch of notations on the budget, but we don't actually have the captions for that.
Right. Yeah, we pulled the footnotes out and did not pull actual icons or symbols.
So can we get an update of that? Because I know those were really helpful last go around.
We, we can put those back. A lot of those, a lot of those things, we had hoped to address in an alternative way with the department summary session that was brand new and accounting for what went into all the different ads. But you're right in that it doesn't go into what's, what was previously in. So it's an eighteen. Line, it's a forty-three, forty.
Next page forty-six. I'm wondering if the notation for it breaks down further, what the cost for each. Yeah, because it looks like it's lumped in together.
Doesn't stop doing with.
How it was last year, because it's.
So, Michael, I know you don't have it in here, but on page forty-six, information technology services three has escalated from an adopted budget of seventy-nine, five sixty to one twenty-nine, five sixty. What's the justification for that sort of escalation, given what we budgeted?
Okay, just that's it.
Forty-six.
Information Technology Services. It's got a parentheses three after it. Aaron, do you happen to remember what went into that one?
Yeah, th- this is, we were supposed to change service, I believe, in twenty twenty-one, but that has not happened yet. So we have left the projection the same because the cost has not gone down at this point.
Footnotes from Amy, thank goodness, has.
Footnotes from Amy, thank goodness, has the last year's. The footnotes for that are information technology services, contract for email services, wifi, virtual servers, how hosting Ethernet MS licensing, live streaming, dedicated internet access. So, what I hear, Aaron, is that we didn't spend that yet.
We haven't made that. We haven't not made the transition yet.
And that would be the transition for.
I thought away from peak internet was going to save us quite a few hundred thousand.
And servers, remember we have.
Right. And that that's all part of that peak transition. And we we've done the server work, but the transition to peak is taking longer. It's in process right now, but it didn't happen as was expected.
So, then in the budget, are we going to see a decrease in internet services, the fees for internet services on another line item?
It would be, I think it would be here. Is it is it this account for peak? It might be, I think.
No, it's more than that. It costs a quarter of a million dollars right now. All right.
Well, there's other there's other funds and that comes out of the utility funds. They have, we have the same line item for.
Oh, you have one. So, it's split between different.
And I think it's done by facility as well. And a lot of facilities are outside of right here. This one might be for City Hall. Just for City Hall, but we'd have to look at that.
Well, good, good.
Maybe this twenty one year in projection, one twenty nine, five sixty may be overstated.
I. Go ahead, Aaron.
In two thousand twenty one, it is not overstated.
Okay.
In two thousand twenty two, we do not until we make the changeover. I mean, we we could project again that it's going to be a decrease, but we we don't know for sure.
Sure.
It it will go down. We're not sure when it's.
This way.
We've been working on making that transition for some time and been having a lot to go back and forth with peak.
This is only the budget. This is what's actually. Well, back to the essence of point three, where I was going with wanting these broken out was I'm wanting to understand by implementing these technological improvements, are we having cost savings in terms of the amount of time staff has had to put into certain things? And I remember when Suze was telling us that the amount of time it takes her to write to do a to do the report for the minutes is long. It takes a lot of time. Now with this new software, it happens lickety split. So.
Not just yet. I'm learning.
Look at he splat then, right? But my point behind that is with all of these different improvements, are we having a benefit and seeing a benefit in in terms of reallocation of staff time or anything else that we could measure? So, we don't just have an escalating cost for software and the and the maintenance and whatever. And yet, we're really not. It hasn't really improved our our life and our cost of efficiencies of doing business. That's 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 it's underlying breaking these numbers down and asking this question.
Sure. And for for some of these, yes, some of these, no. And the these are called out because these are new softwares, as you mentioned. Excuse me, this is ongoing maintenance for those new ones. Archive Social is more of a legal protection for us, so we can automatically back up all all of our records to go on the social media. So, I guess you could see it as a time saver, because otherwise, if we were doing it right, we would go back and we would take snapshots or otherwise, I have no idea how it works, but download all the social media records and that would take an inordinate amount of time. And so, this this is kind of more covering our tail. Banging the table is is more is another engagement platform to better talk to our residents. Basically, I don't know it's so much of a time saver, but it's a way to have better customer service for the residents is how I characterize it. Civic Clerk will absolutely save us time.
And it does have a component for customer service too, because the public will be able to search minutes. Once we get everything up in there, the public can go through and search all the minutes, agendas and everything for like the past forty five years.
Good.
Because we can do from nineteen seventy five to present.
In Chronicles, probably the best bang for the buck out of a whole bunch. This is digitizing our cemetery management and all of our records. Instead of having shoeboxes and binders and rob. You know, we we started our our current process when cemetery opened and haven't changed it really. So, and it helps with continuity too. If Rob ever wanted to not be cemetery, all that knowledge wouldn't just cross the door with him.
So, Rob, I only have one question for you. Did we find the motorcycle?
And I'll add to that. Some things will help people actually do do all of their job in a reasonable amount of time. For instance, in finance and sales tax and business licensing software, that person probably now can actually do her full job without always trying to catch up. Those ladies in that department are always buried with all these priority baskets. On fire and you never get any of it done. And and it'll help them do a better job of their job. I can vouch for that. So, that's they'll, you may not see savings there, but you'll see a job done. That's all customers.
Okay, six oh one. I'm going to speed up as best I can. I saw question four where it asked a question about fifteen thousand. I saw your answer. I I'm not going to spend any time. I I understand it. It's an acceptable answer. Does anybody want to talk about the fifteen thousand projection in the IT capital spending? Good, let's move on. I do have a follow up to question number five, which is the is there an offsetting expenditure decrease for vehicle maintenance if we replace older vehicles and what would that look like? And what you did is you provided a statement saying or the justification, and I'm going to go right to the thing that bothered me. The public works does its best to anticipate expenses. However, accidents happen and those expenses are hard to plan for. Don't we have automobile insurance for accidents? Yes. So, that should not be the one of the justifications for the plus up to twenty three five.
Most of our accidents I'm referring to aren't like tens of thousands of dollars. I mean, if we paid our deductible, it'd be twenty five hundred bucks. And when I say an accident, it's, you know, hitting a curb and you got to replace the front end and it's less than our deductible.
There's many times that we don't put an accident through the insurance company. Because like Kip said, the deductible is twenty five hundred. And so, sometimes if it's only about, if it's four thousand dollars worth of damage, we do the risk assessment and it's not worth putting in a claim for then our insurance rates to go up. The other thing is, most of the repairs, we will get insurance for the parts. But we don't get insurance for the labor. Some of this is labor. Kiff? Accident repairs?
No, I mean, we don't really charge for labor. It's all in-house.
And it's time.
Yes, it is time.
Okay, I I get a lot of what you're saying. But we've asked for four brand new police cars. And the logic is it's going to save a bunch on maintenance, yet the maintenance amount is a fairly sizable jump. So, and you gave us twenty sixteen through twenty twenty one in in an average of is what you came up with for the two thousand twenty two budget. What I would like to see is throwing out the high and the low and recalculate your average since you've got four brand new vehicles that we've approved, we're inclined to approve, which should be a tighter. You know, you talk about standard deviation, so there should be a tighter shot group on what their true maintenance costs. And if you do that calculation since twenty, instead of twenty three, five hundred, it should be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand eight hundred.
Rusty, I don't know what to tell you other than our guys are good at what they do and our fleet is getting older. We're only replacing about half of what was recommended to be replaced. So, I would anticipate our maintenance costs to go up even replacing four vehicles.
And remember, a police car lasts an average between two to three years. It doesn't last five to seven like a typical passenger vehicle, because they go twenty four seven.
Yeah, I'm just.
Just saying.
Just also on that, the we need to be a little bit fluid when we're talking about purchasing police cars as against maintaining old police cars, because especially in the current situation, I've been on the front a lot with the supply chain. We can order these vehicles and and the and the state bid, they're saying, we don't know if you're going to get these in April. We don't know if you're going to get them in March. We don't know if you're going to get them in May. So, it might be mid-year before we get these new vehicles. So, we still have to maintain the old ones up to that point.
Well, you're talking about something that's near to my heart. I have two vehicles. One is fifteen years old. One is twenty eight years old. I can assure you, it's a whole lot cheaper to maintain a vehicle than it is to buy a new one. So, I wouldn't be opposed at all to increasing the maintenance budget. I'm going back to last budget season when our late mayor Val Carr had such a passion for the work. Now, it was it was certainly looked at and I think exhausted in terms of how all that went, but I think the basic point is it costs a whole lot more for a new vehicle than it does to maintain a vehicle. I recognize in the police department that that may be a little higher usage, but to your point about the the supply chain, planning for us to be able to maintain what we have might be a wiser route. And down the road, if we get to the point where we need absolutely need new vehicles, okay, we need new vehicles, but I think the the goal, at least of this council, has been let's let's increase efficiencies, decrease debt, get staff up to levels that are that are functional and healthy. And, you know, then we can have the the icing on the cake or the new vehicles and stuff, but just because everyone else is getting new vehicles, I don't mind driving driving an older vehicle that's well maintained. So, I would vote to seriously look at that extra expenditure on new vehicles and look at increasing the maintenance budget.
Yes, I'll just comment that until you walk in the shoes, caution you your interpretations, because these folks work really hard. And I firmly believe in providing the tools to them to do their job in efficient and comfortable. I just said, try on those shoes.
My response to that is I was a maintenance officer in the army for two tours. So, twelve months each tour, I and I guarantee military vehicles are driven harder than military police vehicles. They are. If you see where off-roading goes across country in combat, they're brutally. Robert is actually correct. It is cheaper long term to maintain older vehicles than to try to buy new ones. So, I'm I'm with you. I would rather take a look at increasing the maintenance dollars in in question, especially right now when the cost of new vehicles is through the roof because the supply chain is completely broken down. You may not even get a vehicle if you order it. So, instead of budgeting for new cars, it may not come until two thousand twenty three. I'd rather see an increase in the maintenance and then the next council could take a look at whether they want to put the new cars when the price for vehicles, once we get them all off the ships and out of the docks, start coming down. So, I agree with you, Robert.
And if we don't buy them and they don't come, we're not going to spend money anywhere.
Right.
Right. Whether we budget or or not.
And and another thing I would I would add to that. I have a couple of thoughts. We we have two fleet guys. As the fleet continues to age, that's more and more time for those same vehicles to be in the shop out of service and more time on those two fleet guys. And we can't do everything in-house. When one of those guys has to take the vehicle down to the shop down the hill, someone has to bring it back. And so, there there's there's a lot that goes into that maintenance consideration and the logistics for doing that. Another another thing that goes into the police vehicles in particular is this is a lesser point, but it's it's a morale thing for our police officers and for other folks who drive the vehicles for police and for and for the public works guys. These are their offices. They spend a great amount of time in there. And just because the miles and everything aren't showing up on the odometer, it doesn't mean it's not getting the beat out of it. And so, the vehicles do have additional wear and tear that may not show up on the odometer. And so, there it's, we haven't replaced vehicles, I think, on a large scale since two thousand sixteen. And this create, I I appreciate what's being said. It does create a ticking time bomb. Because at some point, the vehicles will need to be replaced. Something will break catastrophically on it. And then you're going to, we already have it, we already have a backlog of non-replaced vehicles that are over their recommended service life and it will need to be replaced all at the same time. We have seven Chevy Colorados that were purchased when.
Early two thousands. Yeah, it was the, actually, Kelly would know better, but it's.
I was here.
We we bought them, we bought them all at the same time. We still have them. And we, I think we auctioned off one last year and I thought, I could use it, I could use it, pick up this for beating around. I looked at it on the auction side. I'm like, no, I don't. But they they all get used uniformly in a pretty good way. And then you find that they all need to be replaced at the same time. And so, you have things that just keep marching. I, this one is needs to be replaced. This one needs to be replaced. And ultimately, they all need to be replaced. And then you're at a point where we are now. That's well, which one do we do first? While we can, while we have to prioritize, because vehicles are expensive, what what is the worst of the worst? And then the the thing that still needs to be replaced is going to have to hang off another year or another two years or another three years past the day yours originally wanted to replace it.
So, and if I could just tag on, I agree with your statement. Vehicles, maintaining it long term is cheaper than buying new. However, these aren't your normal vehicles. They're hard on them. When they break, they break. And it's a long time in the shop. So, it's not like your personal vehicle where, you know, you'll baby it a little bit. I mean, we're, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna say this, Ella. We're so efficient. When they do their driver's training, we make them take the vehicles with the crappy tires. So, we don't burn out a new set of tires. I mean, because they shred a set of tires just in a training day. That's how, I mean, it's it's hard corners, zero to sixty is fast and sixty to zero just as fast. So, they're they're not, they're hard on them. And you and I can't echo, I can't say it loud enough. These guys take pride in their cars and one way to keep staff is give them nice things too. Not that I'm saying I'm for spending money, because if you ask any of my staff, they know how cheap I am.
Zero to sixty and sixty to zero in a brand new car versus an old car is going to wear out your brakes and your tires at the same pace. So, we've got to be talking about different parts, different components in the vehicle if other than tires and brakes.
Rusty, with all due respect, we've been doing this a long time too.
Well, I'm going to just say, I don't think in all the years I've sat on council, I've known Kip to be fiscally irresponsible in any way. He also has the snowplows and the trucks and the vehicles that maintain this entire city and our road system. If he's saying there's an issue with vehicles and he needs to replace them, I'm going to trust the expert. I have cars that are more than seventeen years old, so I believe in keeping cars and maintaining them. And I ride my cars because I four-wheel Jeep. So, I don't baby them, but it doesn't compare in any way, shape or form to a snowplow or to a heavy, huge machine that's operating. There is a difference. There's a difference in maintenance.
Police cars.
Right. And police cars, there is a difference in maintenance. You have people puking in them, peeing in them, kicking them, trying to get out of them. You have dogs in them. It's not the same as your BMW or beautiful truck. It is not the same. And they can't control some of those aspects that happen to them. They also have electronic equipment and emergency equipment that is required by state and law to be put in them that some of our vehicles are older and don't aren't up to par. So, those things then have to get put up to par as well. And I'm going to go to the chief and say, what what's what's up with it? Because I don't have a clue. I can tell you how I think you ought to respect a vehicle and how long one ought to last. I I have two hundred thousand miles on my Toyota Tundra and it's just going to keep going till the day it won't anymore. But that's my personal vehicle. I don't have people puking, pissing and kicking the windows out in it. And if I did, I'm going to want a new truck. Well, and these these new, the new vehicles will have more electronic capability than the current ones, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, and it goes with technique, you know, advancement, advancements in technology so that. The newer cars have got LED lights and LED uh emergency equipment, which is less stressful on the vehicle than having the old one. So. You know, there's always an update, but I'm, I just wanna go back to a point that Michael made about the morale. Um, you know, and I can't, I can't speak for all the guys and girls that, that are, they are their offices. But just today, um, for, for, from my perspective, I had to go down to um, to uh CBI down in Pueblo to drop off some evidence. And the vehicle I, I've, I'm assigned has got a hundred and forty-five thousand miles on it. And when I got in it, I, I can remember thinking, I hope this car gets me down there. You know, and then when I was given the car, I said to the sergeant, I said, what's that funny smell in this car? He said. She said, well, this is the one we used to bring the evidence back from the, the waste landfill on the, on the Kelsey Bethel homicide. And it's like. Can we get new cars, please? You know, it's crazy. So, you know, from a morale perspective, just for my own um, um perception. Um, yeah, I don't know what the guys are thinking, but it, it does a huge morale boost. Um, when, when their office is a lot nicer than the ones they've got now. I mean, with the guns and the radios, you look at every single police car. And they've gone through the upholstery on the driver's seat and there's all foam coming out. You know, and to your point, um, we can get new seats. But there's gotta be a cric- critical time mass time where you say, how much do we wanna invest in this old car?
Right.
You know, so.
Well, we probably need to try to see if there's a step, go ahead. I was trying to wrap this up.
I of course agree with you too. Um, I, it's, it's one thing to say that. The way the police cars are treated is not a way that we would have any of our personal vehicles treated. But the difference is if we want to go out and buy a new car, we make that choice with our own money. We're not making that choice with our own money here. We're making that choice with taxpayer money here. And I'm keeping that in mind, that if we all as individuals want to go out and spend. Forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars on a brand-new vehicle every few years, that's our money to make that choice with. It is different when we are deciding to do that with taxpayer money and we have a duty to be as efficient as we can with it. Again, it's been said many times by almost everybody here, it is cheaper to maintain a vehicle than to purchase a new vehicle. Now, I can find that there's some sort of compromise in between increasing the maintenance budget. And decreasing the amount of vehicles that we plan to purchase the next year. It might be hard to go ahead and get our hands on, I believe it's four vehicles, right, that we're looking to purchase. That might be a hard task to do anyways. So isn't there some sort of room to say, let's increase the maintenance budget? Plan to purchase one or two vehicles this year and stretch that out till the coming years?
And that's. I would, I would support that.
Well, it, and it's a great point, and that's exactly what we've done. There is an additional backlog of vehicles that is recommended for replacement. Kip came to me with how many initially on your total list?
Oh, there's eight in this budget.
Well, well over a dozen vehicles uh that are due for replacement. And we said, we, again, in the interest of staggering them, so you're not replacing them all at once and setting up yourself for a time bomb several years down the road. We said, no, we want to stagger them. And so that, because we have not replaced vehicles in five years, that's what, that is exactly what has happened. And so we're, we're there with you. It's already been done and we scaled back. Um, the original ask, I think, was for maybe another four. Between four and ten, so it's what you're asking.
He brought me two lists of vehicles to replace. Um, of those two lists, he prioritized them because he's like, there's no way this is gonna happen. So of the list he brought, there was eleven on that needed it ASAP. Um, of those eleven, there were six in the PD and five in parks, buildings and grounds. Uh, we did not budget all those. And then outside of that list, I have. About seven more vehicles, he said, for later. Um, that need to be replaced now, but he's like, there's no way. And we don't wanna replace all of our vehicles at the same time because they all come due at the same time. So.
Well, yeah, okay, just to try to wrap this up, I'm with, with you, Stephanie. It's not my money, it's taxpayers' money. Uh, uh, I could go with buying two new and, and then bump up the maintenance and, and. I hate to say it, if you, if we're worrying about morale, we could put a little bit more money in the uh police officer's salary. Uh, bucket when you're allocating money out, because that's a direct dollar going into his pocket versus, you know, he drives a new car. Uh, but I would support the two new cars and a maintenance bump and not four.
I would say, ask that officer that question.
Yeah.
Um, I, you, a, a compensation comes not just in, in your salary. Compensation is a full, full package. It is benefits, it's your salary, it's time off. Uh, vacation, it's holidays, and it's also the tools to do your job. Um, finance, instead of using paper and ledgers that would take weeks to do something that takes moments now. They have computers that are up to, up to speed and will run the software that they use. Um, it asks a lot of a person to not have the decent tools that they need to do their job. And as Hillary said, we have people here that are frugal and they do the best they can. We have had a backlog before and we worked really hard using the savings in our fund balance to. Roll and over time, get our rolling stock back to a decent level. It's just like, I mean, how does that appear when we're driving junk around? I mean, that doesn't appear to look very well and, and as if we're maintaining our assets as we should. I think, I think you're creating a bigger problem. As you can hear, the backlog is huge. Most of those vehicles were, I've been gone seven years. They were purchased way before I even left. And I'm telling you, you are creating a bigger monster. I understand what you're saying, but it costs money to do the job that our citizens ask for. And not providing the tools is gonna cost more in the long run. I promise. I've seen it. I've accounted for it. Over many years. And I'm not trying to change your mind. I'm just telling you. That you're creating a big monster. And it, it's not as if it's out of control. It's four vehicles. So, anyway.
So I'm gonna just say one thing. If you, we just talked about taking money to pay off the debt of the park. We don't have to do that. That money can also be used for the four vehicles. Things can be allocated in different ways. So to say it's taxpayers' dollars and I'm not gonna do it, we're not taking extra dollars. This is what is proposed already in the budget. It's there, it's not going anywhere. It's not going back to the taxpayers either. It's not going to though. We all know that.
Well, it said there was an item on the, uh, on the proposal of, of decreasing the mill rate by one point seven five percent. And so, and some of our, our community have already suggested that as well. Why don't we do that? We're not doing that. And, and just finally on this, and, and I understand, I hear your perspective, Kip. I hear your perspective, uh, uh, Steve. Just on a practical level, I look at how I live my own life and I would apply that to how I spend the people's money. I have a, a twenty-eight-year-old truck. I thought, ah, should I put any more into this thing? I end up towing a trailer from Arizona, five-thousand-pound trailer with this truck of mine. That thing purred like a kitten. I'm like. Wow, I guess I will think about fixing the oil leak. I think I, I will fix, think about fixing the, the wind, the windshield on it. So. In the same way, if you've got a smelly vehicle that has been, hasn't been cared for, that's pride of ownership. So if we have smell from the Kelly Barrett case. Let's spend two hundred bucks and get it detailed. You know, and if you've got a seat that's, that's the seat, all the stuffings come out of it, spend the money to put a new seat in it. And that increases the morale because you sit in a seat, go, oh, look, I got a new seat. That makes a big difference to me. I mean, the fact I don't have an oil leak, the fact I've got a, a new windshield. Makes a big difference in terms of my morale with my vehicle and my budget says, you know, I'm fine with that. So. I just think that I wanna apply what I apply in my own life to how I spend the people's money. And if you take this back and you go, okay, this is really absolutely what we need compared to some of the discussions we've had here today. I'll reevaluate it, but those are my comments.
So can I just add one last thing? Because I know we're trying to go. Agree with you completely on all the other fleets, but these are emergency services vehicles. If someone's life's at stake, I'm sorry, I'm gonna throw that out there. You have to get there. And you can't take a hundred and fifty thousand mile car that might need a transmission or an engine rebuild. And say, well, I'm gonna take that car there. I mean, I'm to the point now where we're asking the chief to not drive certain vehicles because we need to get rid of them instead of spend all the money on. But if we wanna, I mean, I'm, I'll tell you, you wanna increase the maintenance budget, please don't. I think we've accurately defined what we think we're gonna maintain for this year, regardless of the vehicles you replace.
So, Kip, I absolutely adore you. But I cannot let it pass without pointing out that when it comes to um. Government trying to maintain its budget and its funding, that is always the battle cry of public safety and public health. Um, so that just, that struck me, of course, that, you know, again, it comes down to the fact, how many vehicles do we have in the fleet for the police officers?
Seventeen.
And how many are used per shift?
Well, on a Wednesday, um, you probably got six. Six per shift, right? But on a Wednesday, because you've got double coverage, yeah.
I'm not sure what you guys rotate them at.
Yeah.
So what I'm pointing out is if we have seventeen cars and even if all four of those completely break down. That still leaves thirteen and you're saying we usually run half of those during the shift. Um, so again, just pointing out, um, I do appreciate it. I know you to be very fiscally responsible. Um, but it, it, I, I'm sorry that it had to go there threatening public health and safety um over this issue.
No, I appreciate your comment. And I actually agree with you completely because when it comes to budget talks and the PD wants something and we want something somewhere else. The, the emergency service always trumpets, so I, I totally relate.
And I, and I wanna add one more thing to this. It's like, okay, so if you've got four vehicles, you're. And, and you look at what if you are to have, you say you have two people working in the, in the bay in terms of repairing vehicles. Well, what if you look at an increase in staff there instead, instead of the vehicles? So you have a more timely turnover and you've got a more. Uh, efficient use of what we've got. So, I mean, is, I don't know the cost benefits, I'm just suggesting, what does that look like?
So we have two mechanics, we've had a vacancy for two and a half years, we can't.
Employees are ongoing expenses, so expensive. They are the most expensive part of any organization.
There's, I'm not seeing a consensus here with this topic. So I don't know what needs to be done in order to come to one.
The city manager's gonna need some direction.
I saw a compromise laid on the table.
We propose.
I, I would propose, um. I, I would like to propose that we change the purchase level to two vehicles. And then um, have you guys come back to us with what that looks like adjusting the maintenance budget as well, keeping those other two vehicles in the fleet for now.
Could I just make a point on, on the point you made about how many vehicles we've got? Uh, seventeen. Um, primarily, we've got way too many vehicles. Let me tell you that. We've got way too many old vehicles. And we need to get rid of some. I mean, there's no, I, I asked, why is this fit? We've got a vehicle sits out at the police station, I've not seen move yet. Uh, it's a Jeep and we need to get rid of it. We don't need it. So I wanna, you know, why I said four vehicles is I probably wanna get rid of six of them. Um, and, you know, and because there's no point having six old vehicles we don't use. And we, we could get money for them. Exactly. And I don't know why we have so many.
Sell them and come back to us with the money.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I would suggest is we get rid of a lot of these vehicles and trim the fleet down and get. Vehicles that are capable of doing the job that we need them to do.
Yeah.
Well, just as, as a footnote to that, that is great. Vehicles that old and that beat us. Bring about fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Believe me, you don't want them.
Something I'm observing, just generally, is I'm observing a lot of micromanagement by a board that's supposed to be looking at a higher level. And for us to be telling the staff how to manage their departments, that's not our job.
Right.
That is not our job. And, and to micromanage. Um, maintenance budget. Um, I don't know. I just think, I just think.
All right, the policy level would be maintain your vehicles versus go buy new ones.
And they do.
End of story.
And they do.
And to be honest, budget is one of the biggest rules that we play as council oversight of the budget. So, you know, to. Uh, to criticize us for going through the budget and asking questions about where the money's coming from and where the money is going. That is absolutely our top duty as council members to do.
That is not what I said.
I think. It is a unique stance, though, to want to nitpick on four vehicles from. A particular department that we all know to be fiscally conservative and who is at the epicenter of caring for this community. I think if you wanna micromanage the budget, feel free to. I have no issue with it. But I think you may wanna consider other areas before you absolutely determine that this is where it must be from.
So this is just one of many areas. I don't think we're necessarily nitpicking this area.
What, the tough part too to think about, like when I say seventeen vehicles, there's about eleven of them that actually do the responses. There's, the rest are, there's a, uh, the, uh, where'd it go? The, the Humvee, that's more for parades, um, those type of things. Um, some of the command vehicles, they're Jeep Patriots, like. I can run faster than those. So they're, they're not all response vehicles, just to keep that in mind. Um, so.
But are the ones you're asking for response vehicles?
Yes, yeah.
And that's where I take issue.
That's too high.
So there's lots of details.
Lots has come out in this discussion, you guys, a lot. Like, we're starting to look at, okay, what's it actually look like? So you're saying it's not just one of seventeen, replacing four of seventeen, six of what's are not being used. Now you're changing. You're changing the perspective of what you're presenting here significantly to say of the eleven that you have that are response vehicles. What percentage of those are really falling apart and can't be maintained after all the discussion we've just had? And then what does that number look like? And is it still four?
And on top of that, thank you to the chief because you provided quite valuable information. About the number of vehicles that even you don't see as being necessary and that, you know, whether it's fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars per vehicle. Still, that's that, that much less money of taxpayer money we have to spend. And certainly, that's an example of, hey, you can come to us and say, I have five vehicles I wanna sell and scale down the fleet to save on maintenance cost. I'm pretty sure everybody here is gonna love to hear that.
And, and then the second question is, so if you're gonna replace four of those, are you gonna sell four more? So does that mean six plus four, does that mean ten vehicles you're gonna go bye-bye this year? If you replace that four, are ten vehicles gonna go bye-bye this year?
Yeah, if I replace, if I replace four of our current patrol fleet. Then I would, I would love to get rid of these vehicles that we don't really need. Um, and, um, and trim the fat from, from the police fleet. So we've just got exactly what we need. Ri- rather than, we don't seem to be ever getting to dispose of old vehicles.
So maybe you're sitting there.
You keep the old, you retain the old.
We retain your backup. Because your main line, your frontline fleet is unreliable.
Right, and that.
And there's other, I mean, there's other vehicles, like, there's a two thousand and seven Chevy Colorado with a lift gate on the back. It was an old Parks vehicle. We, we put that at the PD so we don't have to call somebody in after hours and they can, they can get dead animals. So I mean, there's, there's different, there's all kinds of.
And so, and then one, one final, final, final note. Um, some, I believe some of these vehicles that we're replacing are also sedan, front-wheel-drive sedans. Yep, in Woodland Park.
Who's brilliant idea was that?
Oh, they're older than this.
Uh, yeah, I can guarantee. In Aurora, I did not have impalas that were front-wheel-drive.
There is a good twenty percent of houses that those vehicles would not be able to respond to in, in the winter.
Replacement vehicles are foreign interceptors. They have four-wheel.
Four-wheel drive, yeah.
Right.
So just for time, do you have your direction, Michael, that you need?
No. All right, I'll make, I'll, I'll make a proposal. I'll make a proposal that those six. All right, I'll make, I'll make a proposal, I'll make a proposal that those six vehicles are sold, and those are off-center of the budget. I have a problem with four, but if you feel you need four, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, but I'm, I don't think I wanna let it bog things down. I think we've had a good discussion about this that really highlights the fact that where our heads and hearts are at. And so I don't wanna get stuck on this any further, but I, I do think that it brings the fact that we do have vehicles we don't need. And then the question is, how many of the ones you're replacing do we really need? Or are they gonna end up being like the six that are already parking? Because you're paying insurance, you're paying, you're paying licensing on those vehicles too, so.
And I, I would ask on that, if we could, please get the four vehicles before we release the six.
Right, because there's no guarantee.
I don't know when these four vehicles are gonna get here, so.
And I, Councilmember Zuluaga, I really appreciate your continued effort to compromise on this, as the three of us already have. But I would really like to ask for the other three council members to meet us in the middle on this.
Right, I don't have a single problem with what you just said. My only issue, my only concern is, they can't guarantee that they can sell those vehicles. They could get rid of them, though.
We'll get salvaged.
No, I'm not saying give them away, this market is fabulous. This is no need to give stuff away.
We can get it, we can get scrap for the vehicles. We will get something, it won't be a lot. But at the very least, you'll get yourself.
That's a, that's a, that's a mentality I don't share. If I have a vehicle I'm gonna get rid of, I'm gonna put the necessary into it to present it like it's, you know, put lipstick on the pig tuck, I think.
I'm gonna put a giant red bow on it, man. We are going to do our best to sell it. We, we absolutely will. We use an auction site, and lots and lots of eyes see this, actually I had this conversation earlier with the school district who's using that site now too. So a lot of eyes get it, it's online, and so that helps us get the best price.
Yeah.
But sometimes, the thing is, just junky. But we, we do our best, and we have a process that works pretty well for us.
But cleaning it up and getting rid of them and the licensure and the insurance and so on and so forth is a step in the right direction as well, so.
So does it sound, do we have a consensus and guidance for you, Michael?
Well, well, you don't have a consensus, but I think you're gonna have a majority. I've got some other things that I'm gonna be asking for, and it looks like we're being very generous in this area. I, when it comes to the final vote, I will be generous in both areas, if, if it plays out the way I hope it does. I'm gonna go ahead and support the proposal that Robert had, which I think everybody was saying they could live with, which is, get rid of the six.
You have a majority, but not a consensus.
That's what I'm saying. I think there's a majority, so we're gonna get four new vehicles after, or we'll, we'll put in for four new vehicles, God knows when they'll show up. But you will go ahead and start getting rid of some of them at least. And maybe hang on to a couple, and that would at least give a four-person vote. So we can move on to the next topic, and we'll, we'll see how this plays out as we go through the remainder of the budget.
There's another option. The other option is, you drop it to three vehicles, you increase your maintenance. You don't know if you can get your vehicles by mid-year, so maybe that's a more realistic compromise. Is drop it by one, increase your maintenance number, and then you're, you're really working with the reality of what we're dealing with, we're supplanting. You're not hanging out your hat waiting for, for these vehicles to come, and they're really not coming, but you work on the ones you've got, so.
If they don't come, they're gonna have to do that.
You know, I'll make the next step to compromise on that too, so it's up to the three ladies of you.
So what is the proposal then? Three vehicles?
No, I agree with the first stance of getting rid of the others and getting the four.
So, okay, so you would go with the four new?
Yes.
Get rid of the six?
Yes.
I'm listening to the staff. I will go with the red.
Yeah, so you.
I haven't heard a person say anything about it yet.
So Kelly, are you gonna do four?
Yes.
Four and make, get rid of? All right. This for working, for moving forward in the budget process, because we're not casting our final vote
Right.
on the whole budget.
Correct.
I'll go ahead and give you your fourth vote. I don't know, Robert, if you'd make a fifth, I know Stephanie, you're not.
I, I, I mean, we've come a long way on compromise. I'd like to see a little bit of movement from these other three, but apparently that's not gonna happen.
Well, as I talk this through, to up the maintenance budget, and to go with fours, doesn't make any sense with the way this discussion has gone, doesn't make sense. So I, I think when, after I speak it, and I say it again, it's really, I think that the idea, if we're gonna up a maintenance budget, if we've got supply issues, let's look at three, let's look at increasing our maintenance, and let's move forward with that. That's where I think is really speaks to both issues. And I'm not saying, I mean, Kip's already very frugal, I get that, Kip, you are, and I respect that exactly. But I guess I'm even more frugal when it comes to what I live on within my own life, and I have to apply that to what I do on council.
My position is, is I'm supporting the budget as it's presented. I don't think the maintenance cost is going to need to be increased. If it does, they'll bring it back just at the end of the year. You know, this is the best, this is our plan. This is the best information we have now. What happens between now and the end of the year could be completely different. And if we can't buy the vehicles because of supply chain, the budget doesn't get spent. It rolls to the next year, and we find out, and we look at it again next year. So the supply chain will take care of itself, and the budget won't get spent if we can't buy the vehicles. Which means that what we have will have to be moved. And we'll look at where we are as we get there. But this is, this is the best knowledge we have as of today, and you know, after being through it a few times, it will change. But we actually do, and what this looks like will be two different.
So the, the opposite thought of that is, we could go with two vehicles, upending the maintenance cost, and if we discover that the supply chain is not an issue, and we are able to get vehicles, as you said, budgets change throughout the year. There's nothing that prevents them from coming back and asking for an appropriation from us for additional vehicles.
I, I would, I would push back on that, because there is a calendarized time constraint on purchasing vehicles. We purchase vehicles off the state bid, it's a guaranteed best price, we don't just go buy them off the lot.
Right.
Each manufacturer or dealer for the manufacturer has a quota of vehicles that they use for fleet sales, and those, those usually get depleted in January. And so if you're not in by a certain date in January, generally, you're out of luck until the next cycle. And then you are forced to buy it off the lot, and typically, that's a lot more money, especially right now.
So what is our guarantee that even purchasing those will be able to get the stock?
If, if we get in, within the quota for those vehicles, we, we will have, we will have our ticket. It's just a matter of when. In my past experience of non-COVID logistics headaches, usually that's in the April-May timeframe for light-duty vehicles, heavy-duty vehicles, it takes longer. And we only have one of those, but like with interceptors, usually it's April or May. But we will have our place online whenever they do arrive. I think anyone would be a fool to guarantee you a date on that.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead, we're gonna wrap this up, because.
Well, Hillary, you need four, so I'm gonna give you the fourth vote.
So.
Well, it's not a vote, but you need four to give.
We need a majority for consensus.
Right.
But the point I'm gonna make is, I understand what you're saying about the maintenance budget, but our maintenance expert is right here and just said, I don't need the maintenance budget. I need the four vehicles.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, he's the expert. I'm not. I don't know what the city needs, plow-wise, cop-car-wise, but he also told me their first responder cars, which is critical to the functioning of our city. And if my expert is telling me, this is what I need, and I don't need a further maintenance budget, and I see him squirming in his chair over this issue, I feel like we have a problem, because we're not the experts. We may control the budget, but we're not the experts on each topic in this budget, and our experts are here telling us.
I get it. And Hillary, that's what I'm saying. I'll go with the four, get rid of the six. No maintenance, and I think you got your four, which is a majority to move forward. But it's a straw that's been added to cattle for the total budget. I'll see where the rest of the discussions go.
Very good. So, Michael, you have your direction then, and we're going to go ahead and wrap up. You have the consensus for the four vehicles.
Okay.
And the maintenance budget, but we're gonna, is this about the vehicles still, or a new topic?
Do you have additional items besides the six? So I think this is why the mayor's bringing this up.
We're gonna do another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Do you wanna finish this one off before?
No.
Because it most.
We'll start, so everyone pay attention. Next meeting, whenever that occurs, Robert gets to start with his issue. And then you get that issue, and then we're gonna move over to the ladies, so that they get an opportunity as well, so.
We have a very short council meeting, do you wanna reconvene this evening? Or do you want an additional?
Council, do you want an additional meeting or to reconvene this evening?
If it, if we finish up and we have time to handle more of this till, not say nine o'clock, I'm.
How many more topics do you have?
There's only one more on this.
You have one.
I got a bunch, and yes.
You have a bunch. Let's finish Robert's question after council this evening, and then we will reconvene with another meeting. Okay? Yes. But this evening after council, we will then reconvene to finish up Robert's question. We are not going to move on to new topics, we will just do the one question. Okay, is that all right with everyone? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Rob's ready. All right, so we're reconvening this budget work session, we were gonna wrap it up with a question from Councilmember Zuluaga, but I also wanna let council know if you really feel a strong desire to continue, and you have some further questions that you just wanna get out of the way, I am open to doing that if council feels like doing that. Also, if you have certain questions that have not yet been addressed, that you do not have the answer to, I know everybody likes to do this for the sakes of public, but I would recommend if you would have the time to meet with the city to get your answer, and then you can bring it back to the meeting and say, this was my question, here was the answer, and then the rest of us can quickly participate with you. Because they've gotta get this on the agenda sooner rather than later. And so I just wanna be mindful, because I know you guys all have really good questions, it's important, and I appreciate everything you're asking. So my intent is not to rush you, but it is, how do we do this? Being most mindful of our time and the staff and city's time. City is the community, I mean. So, so if there are questions we don't get to tonight, we'll do another meeting, but if everyone can come possibly, potentially prepared with their questions answered, that would be marvelous. And if you want to press on with a few more questions this evening, we can do that as well. But let's not go till midnight.
No.
No.
Okay. So, Councilmember Zuluaga.
Okay, thank you. Well, a lot of it has been addressed in the, in the packet that we received. Has everybody had an opportunity to see the packet with the attachments of little green lines and brown lines and black lines and stuff? Okay, so, that being the case, my purpose in asking this question of what does the pavement master plan cover for the next five years? Please help, please help us understand what is needed to get our streets up to our preferred quality. So if Kip or whoever created this map can, can please explain, it says, twenty twenty-one customized program for PQI of seventy by twenty twenty-eight. Can you decipher that for me?
So in twenty eighteen, finished in twenty nineteen, we did the pavement management plan. It gave our roads a score, a PQI of about fifty, fifty-four, somewhere in there. We're shooting for a seventy. In order to achieve that seventy rating, it said we need to spend anywhere between eight hundred and one million dollars, eight hundred thousand and one million dollars a year for the next ten years. We haven't spent any money on our roads lately, all my fault. Trying to continue to get these projects moved forward, we have engineering design done on three, or when I say done, about ninety, ninety-five percent on three projects to include Highway sixty-seven. I also brought forward the twenty twenty-one pavement management plan recommendations that were not completed, and the twenty twenty-two pavement management plans that we needed to spend money on those projects, and I provided the maps for those. So those three maps kinda show the detail of what's done on certain segments of roads, which application was selected to be done on those roads. Rob's stealing my thunder. So that's what I provided in there, and then all the other expenses in the four-ten fund were also not part of the pavement management plan, the sweeper replacement, those type of things.
Okay, great. And my last question about this is, I don't see the full-depth reclamation very often on this, on the map over the next five years, and I just, from conversations we've had, and, and what does that look like? I mean, are we on track to have those surfaces in the city that do need to be reclaimed, that like down where we had the main burst down by, what was it?
The one today, or?
No, was there another one today? I missed that one. No, the one we were down, down by, was it Napa or something, down in that?
Yes, that was down behind.
The new vet, right, 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 right.
Yeah, so I'm not sure about that road specifically. On, on the plan there, there was Kelly's in Baldwin.
Yeah.
Lake was also on there.
Right.
Lake is not in the budget, so we've had certain members of our community convince our council that we don't need to do full depth. We've had certain members convince our council, we need to do engineering on anything that was recommended to be full depth. So we try to do our best with the pavement management plan. If it requires full depth, we'll do a more in-depth engineering analysis on it to see if we need to do full depth for the entire road, because that is the most expensive application. We haven't had good success or good luck with Mill and Overlay. However, full depth is you rebuild the entire road, we've done a lot of chip seal around town. So, so to answer your question in regards to full depth in those areas, I'd have to dig in further. I'm into the pavement management plan and the, and the maps for future years to see what roads that would require, that was required to be full depth.
So that, so in essence, roads that may need full reclamation aren't really in the five-year plan, except for the major one like Lake, Kelly, Baldwin, a few of those, is that? So, so we still, in my understanding, we're really still unknown about some of the other ones?
So for the next two years, I went two years out, I believe, I don't think there's any in the plans for the next two years, but there are other roads that will require full depth until twenty twenty-eight is the plan. Moving forward, I'd like to, in the future, instead of doing a plan every four years, it'd be nice to do a section of town every year, so start breaking the town into sections, instead of spending a big chunk of money every four years, maybe a little bit every year, and have a more up-to-date plan for those sections. Because roads, roads deteriorate over time. I mean, there's the degradation curve, and when you keep your good roads good, and if you have a bad road, it's gone. Get a little bit of life left out of it, but don't spend the money on it right now, because just try to use what's there before you rebuild the whole road.
Thank you, that, that's really completed all the questions that I had about that particular section, so.
I would just like to add just a little bit more detail. So the reason I selected for twenty twenty-two, only five hundred thousand to be spent on roads is because we had spent, we're planning on spending so much, it's gonna be hard to get all those projects done. It's not the eight hundred thousand that was recommended in the pavement management plan. I also wanted to keep a, I'll say a decent fund balance, because what we're experiencing in material costs, I wanna, I wanna be able to have enough money in that fund to do a full-depth project, if that's what's required. So I think the, the fund balance in the four-ten fund after twenty twenty-two is projected to be around two million. I don't have the budget look right in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that's what we're at.
Can you help me understand, so in the, in the packet that Michael sent us, it, it says that the city has budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for the roads this year. And it talks about how many feet that covers, but then further below, it also says it should be noted that the twenty twenty-two CL feet figures do not include the additional mile of improvement for Kelly's Road, which is seven hundred thousand and one point two five miles for Baldwin Rampart Road, which is one million dollars. So where is that all coming together if we're only budgeting half a million dollars?
So we're only really budgeting new, new budget, a half a million for twenty twenty-two. All the other projects are old projects that weren't completed. So we're only really budgeting new, new budget, a half a million for twenty twenty-two. All the other projects are old projects, uh, that weren't completed.
So that money is carrying over from the previous budgets?
With, with accurate engineering estimates, so going forward. So originally, we had budgeted around nine hundred thousand to do Kelly's and Baldwin.
Okay.
We had engineering done on those, engineering estimates came back, so it was seven hundred just for Kelly's and then one point. About one point one, if I believe, uh, for, uh, Baldwin.
Okay.
So those were just carried forward. They were, we were trying to complete them last year, didn't happen. I'm trying to still get those, those roads done.
Okay. Has, like, has the ability to obtain materials and labor softened at all? Is the straight answer is no?
Uh, I was at one day this week staffing, I was at thirty-eight percent.
And that's one of the biggest hurdles in projects, although the larger projects are contracted out.
Yes.
But I know that, that folks in all aspects are having trouble with, with labor.
Even materials, we were unable to get asphalt for quite a long time this year, because asphalt plants would shut down. And then when they came back up and operating, they'd only sell it to their large purchasers.
Right.
And so we called in some favors with other folks who did projects here to get truckloads here and there, but it's, it's still tough.
Hopefully we'll see that improve. I don't know.
We'll see.
Just a quick comment, cause you triggered this in me. Um, great job on the manhole on Southwest Street. It looks fantastic again, so.
Took us a couple tries.
It was becoming quite the little, uh, air catcher. Thank you.
Test your suspension.
So counselor, are there any other questions that you, we could go till nine if you have at least one or two more? That you think could be answered within a reasonable amount of time?
I, I have one that I'm gonna bring up and it's gonna be controversial. So I, I.
No kidding?
Yeah, I know. So, I, I would like to, to offer this time so we can hammer this out. Cause the bulk of my questions are just, just answers that are trite, but there is one that's gonna be pretty controversial.
Oh, my gosh.
Do you wanna try to take?
Let's try.
Okay. It has to do with the main street.
I mean, if it hits nine oh one though, and we're all still.
Yeah, we can always terminate and, and, and it has to do with the main street. I, I, I would, did not like the vote of, of last year when we brought the budget down to five thousand dollars. I'm seeing what's, the results of that. When, when I saw that, I did talk to some of the main street people and told them, look, I, I feel like. I'd like to go back and argue to try to make you whole, so we can keep Main Street going. So what I would, I'm gonna throw on the table a, a concept of the fifteen thousand dollars that's in the budget. But I would like to take the five thousand, uh, I'm sorry, the seven thousand that they, we did not give them. Um, last year and put it back in so they can replenish whatever accounts they were taking from, from, to make that whole. And so it would be a twenty-two thousand dollar line item, but if there's not a majority that supports that. I'll drop it. I, I simply told him I would try.
I'm gonna, let me address this real quick. I am aware that Main Street is not interested in asking for a budget this year. And they basically want nothing to do with us. They have a particular reason why. I understand what it is. They want to be left alone. I've had this discussion with Michael. I think that that is a very slippery and cowardly slope. Because they could set themselves up for imminent failure with future councils. But that is their wish. So unless there is a consensus that overrules me. I'm fine with that, but they want nothing to do with council this year. And in order to allocate money to them, I would want them to come before council and do a presentation of what would be the intended use. Which they can do and I have no issue with, with Main Street, but they don't wanna do it. So if you, if you guys put that on there, it will force them before us and they are asking not to be forced before us.
I will go back and, and talk to Lori directly. Um, I did talk to other members that were hoping I would champion this. I had spoken to Lori about it at one time and she indicated, I, I walked away thinking that she. Wanted me to champion that. I was surprised at the reports. Um, and I'm trying to put piece together the timeline, so let me take that on because I don't wanna unnecessary. You know, controversial.
I don't think it's controversial with council or council members. I think Main Street needs to indicate whether they wish to come before us this year or not. Or if council wants to allocate funds without a presentation, but I'm, I am not comfortable with that.
And that, that's fair. So I need to go back. I was asked to champion it. Uh, I will validate that request because the timelines are a little confusing on what you're reporting. And when I've had two conversations and I don't know if I'm bookending it.
Sure.
And so I'll go back.
And if I, if I may add something to, I, I had an hour and a half long conversation with Lori Goff and Gail Lindgird yesterday. I'm asking, you know, how, how did this come about? What are you thinking? And they, uh, they do have a plan when it was, um, dropped on the group. Couple of weeks ago for all of us, it was, um, there was a lot of questions there. There is quite a bit behind that decision. Whether folks agree with it or not, this is a different issue, but, um, what Lori committed to doing is, um, summarizing. The thinking, the logic that went into that decision and kinda what the next steps might be and then providing that to the council. Thank you. So that, that is something that's coming. I don't, I don't know when she'll have that for you, but, um, certainly with the conversation, I would say. But for the benefit of the entire council, she'll, she'll have, this is what we're thinking. This is the timeline. Uh, this is how the money fits into it, so on.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go out and swing at a windmill. The person that originally asked me to swing is saying, I don't want you to do it anymore. It's just I'm getting mixed signals from other Main Street members on fighting the battle, so.
And it's, it's all developed very quickly too. Um, and so that perhaps is not surprising, but. Yeah, Lori, Lori, the board, the board chair and then Gail is the manager, so they, they get to make the decision. Yes.
Well, they just need to be mindful of when your presentation occurs to us for the final budget, so.
I wanted to get ahead of.
See, that wasn't so painful, was it?
I just would like to just. I would, I support what Rusty has proposed. Um, I see the value in Main Street. And the last meeting Catherine shared a long laundry list of successes. That Main Street has had and projects and events that they have established that are important to this community. And I just, I think losing the momentum on those is not a good plan. And I, I just would like to see that continue. And I've always wanted to see more of a collaborative effort with other organizations in our community. And I think rebuilding their board, um, might be one step in that direction. And I would support that funding as you described, Rusty. Um, but as Michael said, they're going to share more. And I think that sharing with us is an important component as well, on a unified front, certainly. So that's just all the.
I wanna make sure that I'm championing something that is being asked to be championed. I, I, I've seen a lot of progress this week. I mean, the DDA made a conscious decision. And I watched them do that on, and the discussion they had about giving that three point five K. When, you know, there hasn't been a lot of cooperation and they viewed it as a, a gesture. To start anew with a new relationship where Main Street, DDA, um, historical preservation committee. Chamber of Commerce can all start working together, um, in a common direction, so.
Well, and there's always that opportunity for economies of scale when it comes to that kind of collaborative effort.
Yeah, so the only thing I had was, we're, their budget was fifteen thousand dollars and we cut it to five. So where did you come up with seven thousand? Wouldn't ten thousand be, would get you back to the fifteen? From the year before, right?
The math I was coming up with, it would be between seven and ten, but I tried, I had decided, we had a consensus at twelve.
Okay, okay.
Not, we started at fifteen.
That works.
Consensus at twelve, twelve, down to five, the seven back, not the full ten, cause that would be above what we had the consensus.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure where the seven came from, so.
And I know I spoke to you about the possibility and.
Are you gonna speak in your microphone or?
You're right. Yeah, I, in, in thinking through historically, to make it fair, it would have been the seven.
Yeah, yeah, I, I forgot that, I forgot the consensus, consensus number, so that's.
May I? So, uh, let me give you some history on this. And to remind everyone, I was the treasurer for Main Street for three years. I came up here before council and argued for their funding for three years. The agreement was way back in two thousand eighteen, that it was pretty necessary for Main Street to stand on its own two feet. Some of these council members had argued that it was not appropriate for this council to designate funds. To specific nonprofits. So, uh, I have fought that fight for Main Street as their treasurer. I remember quite well what they were told four to five years ago, which was that they needed to start seeking out their own funding. We were made well aware of what the plan was from council and we were told we would go from fifteen thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars to zero.
Oh, seventy-five thousand.
Oh, sorry. Seventy-five hundred. To zero. So they had a heads up that they needed to find alternate sources of funding and we knew it for a long time. I stemmed the bleeding and we managed to keep our funding at fifteen thousand dollars for two years. And yet they still, year after year after year, have not been able to stand on their own two feet. And find their own funding source. And now we're in a situation that they're not only not asking for taxpayer money. But as Councilmember Nakai just reported, they're being put on a freeze with DOLA for the next five months. It is completely egregious for this council to take taxpayer money. And not only just pick and choose which organization to give it to, but give it to an organization that is very clearly saying. We don't know what we're doing. We don't know where we're going. We don't know what our feasibility is. And I am ridiculously surprised that for everyone up here who wants to self-proclaim, they are a fiscal conservative. We are sitting here right now and I am hearing from all of you that you're willing to just throw taxpayer money. At an organization that isn't asking for it. Please, someone explain to me what is conservative and fiscal about that.
I didn't agree with that and I said, they're not asking for it. And I said, and there's no way I'm gonna give them anything if they're not willing to come before us and give a presentation. And I agree with you, Stephanie. We have a group who we have funded in the past, who's now saying, we don't want your money. And even though I said it was, I think it is irresponsible of them to cut their nose off to spite their face. Because just because I may or may not vote for it, doesn't mean others would or wouldn't. But they, I don't think they realize what they're doing either. But I, I agree with the funding portion. If I have a group telling me, thanks, but no thanks, we don't wanna come to you this year. It is not my job to then advocate that they get in here. But I hear where you're coming from. You were asked to advocate and now you're not sure what's going on. But I, I think we're, we're beating this dead horse. Well, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, I'll let Rusty, I'll let you wrap it up and then Robert, you can have your comment. And then I think we need to move on because it's, it's in their house now, not ours.
Agreed. Stephanie, I think there, there were three really important points in what you were saying. The piece I don't have is the historical piece going back as far as you have. My knowledge starts last year. And remember, Jim Pfaff and I were the ones that were kinda going back and forth because I agree. It, it's a nonprofit and it's not right for taxpayers' money to do. Which was why originally the plan was take them from their thirty to fifteen or something. And then give them a stair step one year and then we had talked about next year, which would be this year, to go to the five thousand. Okay, that, and then it just went the year that pulled the rug out from under them.
Just to clarify, that was actually an amended plan that went on longer than the original plan they were given. They, based on the original plan, they were never intended to even get any funding this last year. And so that funding was extended for another year. No rug was pulled out from underneath us. And I say us because I was the treasurer for the majority of it up until mid twenty twenty.
Let me change my words because you have a valid point, uh, not pulled out from under us, meaning the long-term. Us for the newbies. Uh, it, it surprised me because I was on board with Jim Pfaff. And we didn't agree on many things, but that happened to been one thing we did agree on, that we would go to fifteen. And then give them a year and then we were gonna go to five. We jumped the gun, which is why I, I was coming in to articulate. Giving them back to make them whole and then we can continue on with that ramp down plan. So I do think of it still as being a fiscal conservative. It's just, I'm, I'm connecting my dots, which are shorter period of time than your dots. There were obligations made. I had been told that the city had. Ob, or promised a certain level of support, although it was never codified. DOLA would give them some, the city would, this is what I was told. I'm looking at your facial.
Because I hate that anyone would ever promise anybody anything.
And it's not, so. It's misunderstood.
It may be misunderstanding, so I need to calibrate and getting some better information. But I'm working under what I knew and know up till this instant. That there had been promises that because we had taken the staff position from inside. City staff, ask them to stand up a nonprofit, that we would provide a certain level of support. As a nonprofit. I was led to believe it was around the twelve thousand dollar mark. For the executive director's position, which was the in-house thing that went out. So, um, I hear what you're saying, um, and I don't wanna talk out of both sides of my, my mouth. I am not gonna champion money for them if they're not asking for it. I think it's a bad mistake. I would like to see us have a Main Street, but if they're not, if they've got a plan, they're not asking for it. I'm not gonna throw taxpayers' money at them, but I hope you understand where I came up with that seven thousand in timeline that I, I'm requesting.
So I would like to offer not forcing it on you. I'm happy to give you the information I have, especially regarding. The city contributions from Main Street as I know of them for the last five plus years. I think it's been four or five years. Um, it, the other thing I will mention, you talked about the local support. So this is part of their, um, MOU with DOLA to be, um, designated as a Main Street. And there are certain different levels and there are certain requirements for that. And one of the things that DOLA requires, and it's stated at least last time I saw it, was they had to have. Uh, support of the local municipality and that is all the paperwork says, this MOU that they sign with DOLA. It is not a financial support. It is not, uh, there is no monetary amount to that. It simply states support of the local municipality. And that can be through any means, whether it's encouragement, whether it's in kind, whether it's financial. So I apologize if you were led to believe otherwise. But again, to my knowledge, as always dealing with these MOUs with DOLA and Main Street. It simply refers to local municipal support. There's no requirement that it be financial support. And certainly, there was never at, to my knowledge, talk of any limit twelve thousand dollars program manager. That could have been from years ago when their program manager was housed within the city. And the Main Street program was actually a part of city government and the program manager was paid through the city. She was actually a salaried employee under the city. At the end of two thousand seventeen, the city and Main Street went its separate ways. And the program manager for. and the program manager for Main Street no longer resided within the city, and they no longer paid that salary. So I don't know if that's part of where it comes from. Obviously, there's a lot of history. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you have based on what I know.
I was gonna say, instead of.
Can I kind of weigh in? You just keep going backwards and forwards, it's like. I like to make comments, having been the liaison with Main Street, having advocated at our last budget session to increase their budget. If I recall, uh, most of the council at the time was at zero. And I made the, um, the recommendation, because I was the liaison at that time, to up it to twenty thousand. And I thought I was doing the right thing, because infusing Main Street with what they needed, extra budget money, to be able to, to staff their, their manager and get their, their, their ducks in a row. I was counseled by some of my colleagues that they'd already been given that opportunity, that this was already, was already supposed to be a zero last year. And so I, in good faith, like you're trying to do, saying, yeah, let's, let's support Main Street, it was a struggle for me. So then I watched it. I was the liaison until, until Catherine came on board. And I watched them go through that year of reevaluating, just kind of reassessing where they are as an organization. And that's just spoke volumes, you know, they've tried to get board members, people would come, and then they'd follow away. They try to get, uh, the last volunteer for the, for the cleanup for the last fall. It didn't pan out. So structurally, something's going on, and it's not for me to say what that is. But I was so troubled by it, when we went to CML, I went to talk to, uh, Clay Brown and get his perspective on it. And I think it's fair to say that he said, well, we have a format of a Main Street in Woodland Park that is unlike other Main Streets. And it, in his, he, he struggles with it, because it does, it's a model that doesn't really work. And so from all these different things now, my takeaway is Main Street is in not asking for funds, are trying to reassess what, what works for them. And it doesn't mean that by dropping the ball as, as Mayor Pro Tem is saying, maybe they are, but maybe the ball has to drop so that something authentic can come. And what I wanted to segue into, if I might, is last budget session, we talked about, um, vendor fees. And we talked about what are we doing with the vendor fee portion that is, is not being given back to the vendors, but is going to be spent uh, and accounted for in the downtown, uh, development stimulating of what's happening downtown. So I had thought, great, that'd be a great source to allocate for, for Main Street, but Main Street isn't, isn't coming to that. They're not, they're not ripe, I'll just say. But the ability of these different, uh, groups and bodies, Historical Preservation Society, Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, DDA, all of the different parts of, uh, working parts within our community, I really encourage that. And instead of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful having a, a cleanup, and, and Main Street having a cleanup, why don't we do it as one, you know? That seems to me to be a better solution. And so if we were going to allocate any funds, maybe they should be vendor fee funds, but they be, should be put in a pool that people can apply for, that they have a realistic project. And if then you would get the, 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 these different groups working together on projects, and it would be meaningful for the city. But just to toss money at an organization that isn't, uh, clear on where they're gonna go, uh, I, I, I think we've kind of already beat that horse. So th- my question then is, we have, I didn't see it in the budget as a line item, but this whole idea of the vendor fees, we did promise we're gonna account for it, so I'd like to see where we account for that, as, as one of our budgeting, uh, steps. I have a couple of other ones, if, if I might, unless somebody else has something.
Say one thing.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to thank you for that, what you just said. It was very helpful and very thoughtful, and I appreciate that, and I'll take away from, I really do appreciate that.
Okay.
I think it was positive, and it gives a little more perspective that maybe I didn't think about. So thank you for doing.
Oh, you're welcome. We all add something. Yeah, all right, so the other one.
Before we move on, may, may I ask, are, are we, are we moving off Main Street?
Well, okay.
I hoped we were, but unless some.
I just have one question, and it probably is more for Sally. But on the, it was my understanding that, and I could be completely wrong, but it was my understanding that the reason Main Street applied for the nonprofit status was it gave them access to additional grants. They weren't actually trying to be a self-funded by donation-only group, am I correct?
Yeah, that was definitely one of the justifications to become a 501(c)(3). And, um, Michelle Ferry can maybe justify that, being the treasurer. It gave them an opportunity to go after the El Pemar and other private, um, funders. And not to get into too much city history or drama, but a big part of the split was due to previous city personnel and city managers. It ended up being, uh, to be quite honest, it was a very unique situation where you have a program manager who works for a organization that has a board, but is paid by the city. And so who really controls that program manager? Is it the city manager? Is it the board of the organization she reports to? It was a very convoluted situation. Uh, again, not to get into the specifics of the drama of it, but it ended up being what it was, what it ended up being. And quite honestly, the structure of it, it, that was almost to be expected. It was a very convoluted structure that was had.
Right, but they weren't designed, they, they didn't design themselves to go out and, and have constant fundraisers. So they weren't really a true 501(c), so I'm just, and asking them to do that maybe now is not the right.
They were formed as a body of this government.
Right.
Gary Brevetto championed that, and it was formed
And Sally.
As, through the support of this local government, and came to be as a department and an operation within the city. And that, that you just described, the personnel issue, is when they split off from the, to a 501(c)(3) so that they could keep that person.
Okay.
And then it evolved.
All right, there's a lot more to it. And just to add to what Robert was saying, it, last I knew, uh, you know, talking about the different Main Streets and how it was formed under this city council um, of about the forty Main Streets that are in Colorado. I think there's only one of them currently, this is what Clay Brown was talking about, that is funded separate from the municipality, and is not actually part of the body of the municipality. Um, and I, they're connected, I believe, to their Chamber of Commerce through a membership joint that way. And that's to Clay's comment that we've heard before, Clay Brown's comment with DOLA, that independent Main Streets just, he's seen it tried, it's not a new idea. But it is one that's where a lot of the concern from DOLA comes from. They've seen it tried, and it doesn't work. Um, and that's why, again, being under that municipality and being part of the municipal budget gives them the funding and the support that they need. Again, unfortunately, we have a unique situation, as Woodland Park always does. You know, we're always the one-offs. But yeah, that, that was all how that transpired. Ideally, they would still be under the, the city government, um, and that's a better avenue for success. But unfortunately, like I said, history played out the way it did, and we always tend to be the, uh, the problem children. We always find a way to be the one-off, so.
I think Robert has at least one more question he would like to ask, and we'll let Michael.
Michael had something he wanted to.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to, to, to hopefully quick things.
Yeah.
So I, I've set up time myself with Clay Brown and Gail Langley, who runs the Main Street program for DOLA, um, to talk with them both in a couple of weeks. Aaron and I are gonna do that. Aaron actually has some background with Main Street, uh, from his previous experience, so that, that will be very helpful. Um, what, what I shared with Main Street is, you know, if you didn't take a hiatus, great, but you, you've now pressed a hard reset button on this process, and so the city is not, I'm speaking, I was speaking on behalf of all of you. City's not willing to just let this go by. We don't know what's gonna come out of this. I would like to be a part of it on behalf of the city and find out what is the best practice, to what you just said, Councilman Ralph Erie, and try and understand, can we get there? Do we want to get there? Does that fit for us? What is the city's role? And again, just start from zero and said, like, look, Main Street, if you want to be a part of this, we welcome that going forward. But the city's going to have a role in understanding what that is. Um, they, they actually liked that idea of partnership. They encouraged me to talk with, uh, Mr. Brown, Ms. Langley. And so we'll, well, again, just fresh start, again, is what they're thinking, complete reset. Um, and the other thing is, do, do I have consensus to pull the fifteen thousand dollars out of the budget?
I'm sorry.
Do, do I have consensus for me to pull the fifteen thousand dollars out of the budget before we leave it?
Yes.
Cause I'm keeping score here, so.
I, I agree to that.
Okay. I don't think I've heard anyone say otherwise. Are you okay pulling the Main Street for twenty, fifteen thousand for twenty-two?
I wanted to find out if they're actually gonna come back and ask for it. I thought that's what.
They are not, and, and unless something is changed in the past twenty-four hours. They, they, what they shared with me is that if council did give them money, it would just sit in a bank account until they're ready to spend it again, so they, they would have no plans.
If they're not willing to come and ask for it, then I'm not gonna champion.
I think.
I like the idea of that whole start over, because I believe in it. I think it's a great program, and I think it does good things for our community. But I really like it better under our, in our organization.
And they, they weren't averse to that. Um, they, they. They were not, they were not. And so if, if it's working for other municipalities, uh, Mr. Brown gave me a few different examples, similar in size to us, where it does work well, um, and, and they generally use that model. So it's kind of that hybrid with the nonprofit board to leverage those dollars is, was intended. And then partnering with the in-house city staff, as I understand, um, to do the day-to-day stuff. Um, and that, that's generally more, uh, more successful model.
And I don't want to cough my nose in spite of my face. I, I just see the value of Main Street. How we, how we skin the cat, you know, I'm not gonna fight for the wrong model. I guess, Hillary, you're asking.
Rusty, I couldn't agree more.
We're, we're asking for four, at a minimum, four people to say, remove the fifteen. And you got one, two, three, four.
I think we have full consensus.
I have, I only want to put a, a, a marker in the sand here on three items. So one is the, um, vendor fees. I want to see an accounting for where we've spent the, the revenues of those into the community.
I think you can get consensus on that.
Well, I'm, I'm just like the placeholder here of, of things that I've seen in the budget that I don't, don't see. Yeah, 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 right, right, right. The second one is, um, the, um, we're looking at spending a million dollars for engineering of the reservoir. But I am part of that part of council who has not been privy to any understanding of where we are in negotiations on on the reservoir. I haven't seen the property. I have, and there's, I know, but, but I also understand that we are in negotiations that seem to be floundering. So my question is, I would like a, a report, before we even consider putting a million dollars into an in, engineering project on the reservoir. It might go through, the contract might go through, but at the same time, it might not. And so then, if we spend a bunch of money engineering for a open, open reservoir, maybe there's alternatives for closed reservoir, some other sort of solution to it. So it seems a little bit premature to be saying, yes, we're gonna do that when we don't even have a contract.
Won't be spent unless we have a contract.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. But I would like to be apprised, as a council member, whether it has to happen in closed session or whatever. I'm just like, we, this has gone, because of COVID, it's kind of delayed things, I get it, but.
No, it's, it's all me.
Okay.
It's all me. Uh, if you give me some help, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
Robert, would you be comfortable meeting with Kip and getting that clarified? And then you could bring it back to council and say, here's what I learned, and now I'm happy, or now I'm not happy?
Well, do, all of you, are you all of you fully apprised of what's going on with the contract and the, and the, and the reservoir and all that?
And, yeah, that's where I was gonna make a clarification. Are you just talking about a general update on the reservoir? Or, again, as you said, the contract negotiations have stalled. And I know I haven't been privy to any of the specifics as far as what is cau- causing that stall. And that is quite possibly something that we can't discuss up here in the open.
I get that.
And haven't been privy, I mean, Catherine, if I haven't, I know you haven't been privy to any of the backstory in executive session about what the hangups in that negotiation are. So I, from that perspective, I, I agree with you as far as getting an update that may not just be a general update
Correct.
that's suitable for public.
Right, right. Okay, uh, and I have a third one. Did you want to make any other comment on that, before I go to the next one?
Just well said. A lot of the planned negotiations do happen in executive session.
Right.
Um, there has been no movement on the reservoir in a while. Um, that's why you haven't heard anything.
Well, most of the council up here, except for, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Kelly, have zero idea. So it, it would be helpful to us, if you do an executive session and, and fill us in, that would be helpful. That way, when we look at the.
Meetings.
You do, I know you do, yeah. Your family probably does too, right?
Thank you for calling me Kelly. I really appreciate it.
Oh, okay, as opposed to council member case.
Yes, I do. Kelly's in a good mood.
But, and my, and my, and my last point.
I have a question real quick, though. Are you saying you need an executive session before we can determine budget on that issue?
Yes, yes, I am, I am saying that, yes.
Because.
I, I don't think there's enough time for me to do that. I'm, I would gladly remove the million out of the budget if it makes you feel happy, uh, to not be obligated there. It's simply there as a placeholder, so when everything falls into place.
Then we could appropriate it later, right?
Takes two readings.
It takes one.
Two meetings, to do an ordinance, to do a supplemental.
Right.
If we, if we don't get a contract, he won't spend the million.
I know nothing about the contract. I know nothing about where we are.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that two of you could meet.
Well, and to be all, in all fairness, you, it can be in the budget, but you will be approving a contract with an engineer to spend.
Yeah, we have to see the contract ahead of time and approve the contract and.
Your mic's off.
My, yeah.
We had our attorney here. Can we be read into the contract without calling an executive session individually? I know everybody's looking at.
Yeah, we didn't have an attorney here tonight at all.
Each one of us that is not apprised of this separately, without calling an executive session. I know I just added, like, y- you're looking at me like, I said I don't have time, so that involves now four meetings.
In a, in a meeting to all together, to get updates on something that can't be done in public. Individual meetings with the staff is always allowed.
Yes, and two of you can meet at a time. We could be, we can do it two at a time. You don't have to do it.
So maybe, I'll leave it up to you.
But, but, but what I was saying was.
Nine fifteen, we're, we're good.
Um, when, I, what I was just gonna say was. I know, Kip, Kip can tell us, give us a million dollars. We're not, it's not going anywhere until we sign the contract, and we're not gonna sign the contract until council approves it. So putting it in the budget isn't gonna change whether we spend it or not. It just gives him the flexibility of, once we sign the contract, he can go spend the money, so.
Right, and the probability that that would happen before April is probably next to nothing as well.
Yeah.
So, yeah, half of us may not even be here.
Right.
And then there's all that, right?
Right.
Well, so, my third point, so we can move on. I mean, so how that all happens, uh, you know, I'll leave up to staff and, and, and you guys. I mean, I would prefer an executive session, because we can all talk together instead of having partial conversations. That's my personal preference about it, but, and he'd only have to show up once. So from that standpoint, that would be my preference on that.
We can also cover it during our, our regular one-on-ones with you two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't get the opportunity to talk about it together, so, yeah.
But if you're worried, as, as I am about Kip's workload.
Yeah.
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 We can, sometimes he comes to those.
One meeting would be preferable.
Yeah, okay.
But I can do whatever you need.
Thank you, Kip, yeah. My last one has to do with the, uh, Woodland Park Aquatic Center. And that is, that we have done such great inroads into offsetting our expenses with the aquatic center. And then when I looked in the budget and I see that we are looking at, sorry, Cindy, hi. And then I see that last, last year, we were, uh, uh, taking out of the general fund a third of a million dollars to, to offset the expenses. This year, it's supposed to be. This year is supposed to be three hundred and sixty six thousand. And so I'm just concerned how the, how this works, given the fact we've been doing so well of streamlining things, why we are escalating.
I think part of it is staff and the fact that it was closed during COVID and stuff. So there's some of that issue, but we can let Cindy address the.
Well, that dropped it to two sixty nine or something. So, but yeah, please, Cindy.
Inflation? Huge.
Really?
Huge. So please ask your question again.
Hi, Cindy.
Hello.
It's just. I recognize that last year, we appropriated a third of a million dollars for the Woodland Park Aquatic Center. I think we spent about two sixty nine or two seventy nine or something, if my memory serves me right. And next year, we're asking to appropriate three hundred and sixty six million. And I just wonder. Yeah, 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 right, 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 sorry, sorry. Seventy five thousand, right? Yeah, right.
Cindy, where are you getting all that money from? Magic, right?
Swimmers have gold coins in their pockets.
I wish. I'm not following you. I'm not seeing where your numbers are. If you could help me see your numbers.
Okay, page four, page sixteen, maybe? Page sixteen shows general fund, aquatic center, twenty twenty one, projection two seventy nine. Twenty twenty two budget, three sixty six, five ninety three. And I remember just out of my brain, the twenty twenty one request was a third of a million dollars. And I'm guessing that because of COVID, that just changed the number down to a projection. I don't see the actual budgeted amount. There's not a line, line column in here on this page that tells me what was budgeted, just as projected.
So are you, are you looking at the difference between twenty twenty and twenty or?
I'm looking at, given the fact we have reclaimed profits from the Woodland Park Aquatic Center over the year and really drilled down on new revenue generating at places. How how is it that we have now a budget for twenty twenty two that exceeds our budgeted for twenty twenty one? Which was three hundred and thirty three thousand and our projection for twenty twenty one's at two seventy nine. I just wonder how we get such a big spread there. And this is just a placeholder. I'm not meaning to drill, to make us rack our brains tonight, just when we come back and convene. If we can kind of address that, that would solve my questions.
Yeah. I, I would just add on to that. I agree. I definitely would like some more information because looking at this. Not, not including twenty twenty as the COVID year. You know, twenty twenty one, we we projected adopted budget a hundred and twenty thousand for daily use fees. But year end projections are only fifty eight thousand. Punch and pass cards, a hundred and sixty nine thousand, projected is ninety five thousand. But again, for the proposed budget, budget for twenty twenty two, we're, we're looking at that as as nearly double what the year end projection is again. So I'd like to understand better where those expectations are coming from. Because it 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 does feel a little uncertain that we're basing a lot of expenses off of some revenues that historically we haven't seen before.
So, so if I could help with the estimates on our revenues and our expenditures. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of historical data to be able to work off of. Because the first year is brand new, everything's exciting. Second year, reality happens. Third year's pandemic and we're, twenty twenty two will be our fourth year. We've gone through different staff changes. We have a very proactive, very experienced new aquatics manager that has great expectations for more programming, which is going to increase your revenues at the facility. It's not necessarily your annual pass holders or your punch card holders that are your revenue generators, but your programs. So we did not change the budget significantly from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. Just in anticipation, we're not really sure where it's going to go, but we do anticipate more revenues than what's actually expected in the budget.
And yeah, and that's why I specifically touched on the daily use fees and the punch passes. Because it does look like everything else, numbers wise, year to year budget is relatively the same. Except for the fact that, again, for instance, twenty nineteen, daily use fees audited amount was ninety eight thousand. Twenty twenty was twenty eight thousand. This year, protect, projected to be fifty eight thousand. So the fact that we're budgeting off of a hundred and twenty thousand. I don't mean this to be harsh, but I think that sounds like a pie in the sky sort of number when we don't historically have that revenue to show or even close to it. And I am concerned with the fact that this pool is already running a deficit. That again, we're looking at expenditures based on revenue that may not be as accurate or reasonable as it should be.
So I completely understand your concern. I can say that we have, since nineteen to current, we have a very active marketing campaign for the aquatic center. Sarah, who works in our department, she has thirty two different avenues that she is marketing our programs. And most of our stuff is for the aquatic center. We have different plans of getting information to the actual users in the facility. And then we also have plans for continued outreach. We haven't had the capacity or the staff member before to do that. And I think that will make a significant difference as well. The historical data, I wish we could really rely on that to be a solid number. I don't know that a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a pie in the sky. I I I believe that we can do that and our aquatics manager believes that we can do that as well. If we're marketing the place or the facility, the way it should be marketed, there are still many people that don't even know we have an aquatic center. And those people even live in Teller County. And that's kind of a sad story to us. So we're really working on on the marketing of our facility as well. I hope that helps answer your questions.
From the original, from the first year.
Is is your marketing, Gal, the one who organized the Halloween at the, at the Memorial Park?
So Sarah Minton is our program coordinator and that she did coordinate the trick or treat. Last year, it was coordinated by Grace, who was my admin assistant at that time.
Okay.
And then Sarah took it to another level again this year.
Oh, I, that's what I was going to say. I was at that event. It was amazing. Thousands of kids showed up. And that was like, wow, and three o'clock or three thirty and their parents too. It was like, that was, she did awesome job. And I saw there were people there from Colorado Springs and stuff too. So if if that's what your marketing thrust is, I've got confidence in it. I just want to say.
So and and one, one other thing on that table that we were looking at.
Yes.
Pointed out on page, I think fourteen years and sixteen in the other version.
Right.
Something we talked about today. There, there's Conservation Trust money that we've, for twenty twenty two, we've moved over from doing a project at the UPCC over to WAC.
Seventy five thousand, right?
Uh, that's part of the seventy five thousand. It's a lot of that was already part of WAC and was already being used for WAC. But I think, was it seventeen thousand? I can't remember what the delta was. But that's also, the entirety of the CTF has been moved to WAC. And we we were talking today and believe that should be counted as revenue and that should be on that table as well. Because that's, that's non taxpayer, non general fund dollars that are being used to the WAC to offset the cost. So it's not, it's not punch cards or programs, but it is revenue that's not tax dollars. So that, I really believe, we talked about it today, just today, that that should be counted as against that revenue too. So that number would be a little bit better. And I wish I'd written down what the exact number is. I think it's seventeen thousand.
It's thirty two thousand, seven hundred.
I thought Aaron was here.
So. So God. So, so God. If you take that thirty two thousand and allocate it into those numbers, what does that drop it to? What is that? What's the outgo for the, what's the projected outflow from the general fund to the WAC for twenty twenty two?
So that that would impact what the general fund is doing. But it would, for this table, it would change this number. Because we're looking at how that number changes over time. The revenue number would be higher for twenty two. So that three sixty six number you mentioned is not going to be as high. It's going to be three thirty four.
To back a third of a million.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's more, it's a better number. But ju- just to address that point that you brought up.
Okay, so those, that was, they were just meant to be placeholders. I didn't think we'd solve it all tonight, but thanks. That was very helpful. Yeah. And thank you too.
Okay, so, we're done, but. Just, just second.
But.
If there are issues that you have placemarked, is staff aware of them? Is it something you can resolve with staff on your one on ones? And even if it can be resolved, please introduce your question and answer then. Do you all feel like we need another budget meeting?
Nothing so.
Okay, so.
We, we were planning, hoping to have first reading by the eighteenth. So from this, a week from right now is Veterans Day. And so we do, we would have to figure it out somewhere in.
So we would need a special session next week?
Or early.
Yeah. So is everyone available? What day works best for you guys?
I will be out of town starting on Wednesday. I'm sorry, Thursday.
So. What day was it? Okay, so can everyone be here on Monday? Or Tuesday? Robert's good Tuesday. Catherine, Kelly, Stephanie.
I can do five on Tuesday.
Okay, so November ninth, five o'clock. What do you want for dinner?
Six council members enter, only one leaves.
Everyone wants whiskey for dinner, Suzanne.
If you want to drink a sort of whiskey, I don't know that I'm.
That is my point. So we can get through it happily and quickly.
How about nitrogen? Or helium?
Okay. So, next Tuesday, five PM, November ninth, we'll have another budget session. If you can get an opportunity to meet with staff, to get your questions fulfilled ahead of time. So we can just cut time in half, but still get the question and answer out. That would be great in the public. I don't, there's no questions allowed.
Well, if we talked earlier about having something with Kip, shall we also plan to have an executive session at that time? Do that first maybe and then go into, then go into the the meeting? Would that be a way we don't have to go back over it again? It'll be done.
Well, I. Yeah, I feel like I understand.
I know you do and.
Yeah, so Kelly and I don't need.
So that was my proposal.
It's appropriate, an executive session. It's country, the reasons to call an executive session. We're not, we're not in contract negotiations.
There's no contract to discuss.
I can't imagine what the reason for the executive session would be. Yes.
And Kip can explain, I think, the majority of what you have questions about, I think he can just explain in in a public setting.
Well.
Because, because there's no contract detail.
On, on Tuesday at five o'clock, is that?
Yep, Kip will be here.
We start off with you, you explain your stuff and then we can go into the rest of the.
That would be fine.
That works.
I sleep here, so whatever you want.
Popcorn.
That works.
Okay, that's very good.
Okay.
All right. So, just reiterate, meet with staff if you have certain questions.
We don't bite. I have candy. I have coffee. Come visit.
Yeah. So.
Not enough, right?
All right, very good. This, this session is over. Thank you very much, everyone.